All right, it's seven o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call the Nottingham Planning Board Meeting for Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 to order. Before we begin, I'll have the members go around, we'll go around the room and have everybody at the table introduce themselves.
Skip Servants.
John Morn.
Teresa Bascom.
Edward Veal.
Drew Stevens.
Doug Cummings.
Larry Hady, SRPC.
And at the moment, Chris Evings, the Planning Board Secretary, and Buzz Davies, or Robert Davies, our Planning Board Lieutenant, are not in attendance. So our, any votes tonight will be, at most, of count of six. Just real quick, obviously, September 11th, having a meeting on that date, I think, is always just a time for everybody to take a moment, pause, and reflect on where we are now, and where we've been, and remember people that gave their lives on this date 23 years ago, and all the first responders then and now, and the survivors. So, thank you, everybody that's, that's here tonight, doing, doing their civic duty, and all those that, that are continuing to do so. Small agenda for tonight, for the most part. We have one public hearing. It's case 24-012 SIT Shea Concrete, 160 Old Turnpike Road. This is a continued case, application from BSC Group on behalf of Shea Concrete for an amended site plan review, including various proposed changes to the property. The original site plan was approved on July 27th, 2022, with case number 22-007 SIT, and the property is located at 160 Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, identified as tax map 003 lot 002-2. The initial public hearing for this was August 14th, 2024, continued to tonight. I am the Director of Butter to the case. I'm going to recuse myself. Mrs. Bascom will be taking over chair duties for this case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. So, we received comments from CMA engineers, and it was a couple days ago. I haven't had a chance to look over them, unfortunately. I can copy tonight. And then, BSC, BSC Group, just responded today.
About five minutes ago. Sorry about that.
So, I haven't had a chance to review that. If you would, try and catch us up to where we're at, please.
Sure. For the record, Joe White, civil engineer from BSC Group, and with me is George Shawman, Representative Shea Concrete, he's the site contractor. So, as you said, we received comments from CMA Group on Monday, and we just finished our responses to those today, not too long ago. So, I don't know if it'll be helpful to just quickly kind of run through these and discuss them. There's, I would say, half of them, or more than half of them, are pretty, pretty quick, you know, plan edits that we had to make. Unfortunately, we don't have a fully revised site plan yet for those edits. We just didn't have time to turn that around between Monday and today.
Okay.
But if it would be helpful to the board, I can run through their comments and our responses.
Sure.
Okay.
I'd appreciate that.
Yep. So, the first one, you guys can kind of follow along here, was in regards to the variance that was granted for the 100-foot side setback. The question was if that's still valid with the site changes. We weren't proposing to encroach any, any closer to the lot line with, with that setback that was granted in the variance, so we don't think that that should be affected.
Excuse me, one second.
Sure.
Which sheet are you looking at, and where?
So, our sheet, the BSC Group.
Okay.
Our sheet has the comments from CMA in bold, and the BSC response right below each one. So, the comments and responses are all in one place there, so it might be easiest to follow along.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is under the approved variance and waiver section, the first section there.
Okay.
So, the question was if the, the variance that was granted for the side setback at 62 and 1/2 feet is still valid with the proposed site changes. We weren't proposing to encroach any further against the side setback, so our opinion is that it does still apply.
Hi, Chris.
And skipping down to, to site plan regulations, fire protection, there was a question if the fire department had approved the location, size, and design of the proposed fire cistern. George here spoke with the fire chief about the, the fire cistern and location. To our knowledge, there were no, there was no opposition to it. We haven't received any comments on its location. George, I don't know if you have.
Yeah, I spoke with the building inspector as well, and the fire chief is fine with the cistern location, where it is, and the size of the cistern. It's all being engineered for the size of the building, so that's all part of the sprinkler system and everything for the cistern, so that's all taken care of.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Will the fire department have access to that cistern?
Yes.
So, it's not just a closed system for a sprinkler system, right?
Correct. Yeah, originally, originally, there was, there's been two different, as you know, there's two different fire chiefs.
Right.
The original fire chief that I'd met back a while ago wanted a standoff, so in case, because there's other buildings on the property, so in case there was a fire, they could always pull up to that as well. So, we're going to have a standoff on that as well, so they can use it, if the fire department needs to use it for a car that's burning, or whatever, they can use that as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, realistically, it is to support the sprinkler system for the new building?
Correct.
So, it's not technically a Nottingham cistern?
Correct. It's on private property. So, originally, they had talked, went back and forth with the, a plastic cistern versus a concrete cistern. And, and it's in the subdivision regulations in Nottingham, for a subdivision, there has to be a plastic cistern, and this is more of like a private cistern.
Yep.
Because it's on private property. And, meeting with the fire chief, we, we're going to have the sprinkler system inspected every year for flow rate and controls. They're also going to inspect the cistern as well, to make sure the cistern is in operating condition as well. So, you'll get an independent company every year that will come in and check that cistern to make sure there's no problems with it.
Okay.
So, CMA's comment might have been based on the town cistern aspect, is what it seems like to me.
Why, I'm not following that, because they would.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if it's for their personal fire suppression system, does the fire department even have to look at it?
Well, I know they do for other homes and stuff, so I would imagine they do. It's part of that building.
Because of the fact that it's, the only time that Nottingham Fire is going to use it really is in the case of emergency, like you said, for one of their outbuildings or something like that. All the new subdivisions on that Route 4 area road have their own cisterns that go with those subdivisions.
Right, and the fire department would be.
Would be there, so.
There.
Right, for those purposes, there. And because it's a private, that's why they can go with the cement, they don't have to go with the ground, because it's their own.
Right.
They're just being gracious enough by allowing that second thing, if it's needed, it's there.
That's standby.
Oh, but your, but your question wasn't that. I don't understand it to be that. Was, were you asking?
And multi-remains need sprinklers.
I don't care about that. I care about whether the fire department is involved in it in some way, shape, or form.
For the same reason that the building inspector reviewed the building, it's under building code thing, this is going to fall under fire code, fire suppression type thing. So, of course, the, the fire chief does need to inspect it, make sure that it's.
Hearing site plan?
Yeah, I mean, we, we should know that what we're approving is going to be, you know, something that meets code. Whether it meets code, or whether the fire department has access to it, are two different things.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this piece still.
I don't want to, I, I'm, I'm trying to divorce the two things.
Yeah, yeah. So, this, so this piece still needs to be reviewed by the fire chief.
Okay.
And as John pointed out, they're being gracious by giving access.
Yeah, yeah. And that, that's great.
I think it still has a fire code that it has to meet, is the point.
And their insurance company, I'm sure, is going to be one signed off every year to make sure that it's working properly.
Yeah, and I think, I think, you know, I'll make it up to myself, I'd like to see something in the file that the fire chief has looked at it, and it's fine.
It's a minor detail, I'm sure that's.
Yeah.
I think it's in, I think it's in there someplace.
Yeah, it is. He already wrote a letter to the, the planning department saying that he okayed the fire system.
Oh.
And it, and it, but at the time, I thought it was the public-type cistern, and then a variance would be required, and, you know, all that, all that kind of stuff. But I don't think that's it.
Correct.
Okay, I will continue on to, so the next section here is regarding subsurface sewage systems, so septic design. So, we do not have a, an approved septic design plan yet for this property. When we relo, if you remember, we relocated the septic system. Originally, it was out behind the building, I guess, planned north, if you will. We relocated it to the side of the building, on the left side, if you're looking at it there. So, we have not completed the septic design plan, any location yet. We are aware that we need to complete one and permit it through NHDES. We also need to do two test pits in that location, which was one of, one of the comments we received in a perk test, which we're aware of, and we're in the process of getting that That location that it's in, it is a proposed seven-to-eight foot fill there, so it's not, it's going to be above natural surface anyway, so we're not concerned really about groundwater. We do have 10 test pits across the site, and groundwater is between three and, three and almost six feet deep in all of them. So, we're not too concerned about the groundwater, and all the soils we saw out there were consistent throughout 10 test pits. So, we understand that we need to finish that septic design and do the test pits, you know, for permitting purposes with NHDES, but we haven't done that yet. And the next comment there is about the test pits, so I, I just kind of spoke through that. We are showing on the revised plans, a 4K area, if you will, the 4,000 square foot area that's required for septic, which meets the setbacks to the drainage systems, catch basins, 100 feet from wetland, all those things. So, the last, the last piece to that really is to do the test pits and the, the part tests, which, again, we have in, in process going with that. We're trying to get the original soil scientists who did our test pits back out to finish that process. The next couple of comments were just kind of edits to the drawings, which, again, we made, but we didn't have time to print out the full plan set yet, but we'll obviously provide it to the board. So, flow arrows, we added those to the plans, that's A. B, we did replace the, the inline pipe connections and pipe bends with drain manholes. So, you'll see that on the revised plan. Basically, all that's saying is where we had pipes connected to each other, drainage pipes, we just replaced those connections with the drain manhole. Then several drainpipe callouts were missing, which we added to the plans. So, the proposed stormwater treatment systems, you'll see several comments in here that say that we did not provide test pit information. I did call CMA today and talk to them. They, they missed the 10 test pit logs we had in our stormwater report, and we also showed them on the plan, so that was, I talked to Josh Bouchard, who actually did the, made the comments, and he, he said they just, they missed those. So, those were provided in the stormwater report, and they were on the plan. CMA just missed them. I just want to point out one thing here. So, there's two infiltration areas on the plan. You can see them both here. There's one up here along the building. I'm sorry, where? It's just above this, that building. So, there's one large one here, these are the test pits in that, you know, in that location. And then, we had to, part of the design change we did was, we shifted this infiltration area down towards the driveway, because there was a big chunk of lash that came through here, and it was easier to get this in. So, we still need to do two test pits in this location. Then, we're going to have the same soil scientist do those test pits along with the septic This infiltration area is all proposed fill, so basically, the bottom of this system is what above existing ground, so we're not really concerned about, you know, distance to groundwater and those things. We're not really thinking to the ground there at all, but we still need the test pits, we understand that. So, in the process, they get some of those done, but they're not shown on the plan yet, just the two test pits on that one system. Installation details for water quality inlet and leaching chamber, we had details on the plans for those. I don't know if those were also missed or not, but there's a separate detail for the water quality unit, as well as the leaching chamber. Just so everyone's aware, Shea Concrete actually manufactures both of those, so they'll obviously be using their, their own product there. Plan set should include installation details for water supply lines, sewer line, electric conduit. We added those to the revised plan, which you guys will get. The sewer line, obviously, there's going to be a full septic design plan that's going to be done, which is going to show that in much more detail. It needs to be permitted through NHDES. Four, that's, the underground sewer line was on the plan, we labeled it just to make it more clear. Five is regarding parking spaces close to existing wetlands. The parking spaces we had on, were on the originally approved plan, we didn't move them, and they, it's all existing gravel out there, the parking spaces are still going to be gravel, so there was really no change to those. I'm not sure why the comment's coming now, I guess. But again, that was part of the originally approved design, so we weren't proposing any changes there. And then, review of the drainage, review of the drainage analysis. Again, the first part of that was about the test pits. I confirmed with, with Josh from CMA that they did miss those, they were in the stormwater report, 10 test pit logs were all 10 test pits. Then, I just kind of went through the two infiltration systems. You know, we are still missing the two test pits for that, that one infiltration system that we know that we need, so we are in the process of getting that done. And they also asked about how we calculated the design infiltration rate. I'm not going to go too into the weeds here, but we did design it, you know, based on New Hampshire regulations. Basically, they give you a couple of different methods of doing that. You can do different field tests, or basically, you assume, based on the soil type, you know, infiltration rate, and there's a factor of safety built in, and that's, that's the route that we, that we went for this, so. Yep, that's all their comments, that's our responses. Again, I apologize on the late turnaround there, but the best we could do for tonight, so.
I understand.
Any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any, thank you. Any questions?
Just curious, I, I might have missed, I know this was previously done on a variance and all this, and so the building size is much bigger. Is that what generated additional parking, or was that the parking that was originally shown?
Who will answer that question?
No, the building size, the only part that changed on the building size was this piece over here.
Okay.
The building, the rest of the building was the same. The parking spaces down here, they're not proposed to be paved or anything, it's just kind of identifying the number of parking spaces that are, that are out there for, for staff.
So, did that addition lead to more parking spaces, which?
So, that, that addition is just, just 100% from materials. So, they have sand, stone, and cement that makes concrete, and they used to put it outside, and then moisture from the rain gets into the sand, and it affects their quality control for their concrete. So, most of the stuff that they mix concrete now is with admixtures, not water, so they do, have to take the sand and kind of dry it out. So, essentially, that building that's added on is just to put sand, stone, and cement in, just so it doesn't get wet. The cement never got wet, because it goes in a silo, but most of the sand and the stone, so that doesn't affect their, their mix. That's what that is. So, there's not like anybody really working in that area, that's not a manufacturing area, it's just going to be for holding materials, keeping them from getting wet, essentially.
And there was no increase to parking between the approved, the previously approved plan and the new one we're coming back with? There was, this parking count was the same, the space has never changed, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Nope.
No?
Did you email this to the other?
Not yet, but I will tomorrow morning, first thing.
Okay.
Yeah, as well as the plan set, which I haven't done yet.
Do you have a timeline on when the inspectors are going to be done?
The test pits.
Test pits, and the septic design.
I, I don't have a timeline yet. I'm hoping test pits before the next meeting, and then the septic design might be shortly after that. Yeah. And obviously, we still have to go to DES for that septic plan.
Soon to the bad of going to the DES, they're not exactly quick.
They haven't been done lately, though.
Good to hear.
I've got my library number.
See?
All right.
So, do we need to continue this to another meeting?
Yeah, we certainly can't make a decision tonight.
Okay.
I think that sounds like a great idea.
I think somebody should make a motion about that, then. Is that what we're, you're expecting to continue when?
If we need to. I know it was originally permitted without a finished septic design, with the condition it was provided, but if it is.
Yeah, we're just trying to move forward to get the foundation in the ground, you know?
Yeah.
So, we understand that if it can't be permitted, then.
The thing that you know people that do lots with concrete. So.
The funny part is, they don't supply the concrete for the building, we have to buy the concrete. They only make concrete inside the building, and it's a different type of concrete, so, so we can't even use the concrete in the new building.
You gotta love it.
Oh, absolutely. It's like working for government.
So.
What, John?
Have they met everything?
That's a little question. I mean, basically, went over all the things that CMA did.
Yeah.
Except for the septic design, which is really, it's the only thing we're waiting for, I mean, to be finalized, so. Could there be a preapproval so that they can get?
They should get a conditional approval today.
That's what I'm saying.
So, we can begin to pour the cement, do the, do the site work.
With an approved DES septic design when it's ready.
With one coming in the future.
Yeah, it's a conditional approval, so if you want to start knowing that, you know, it's a septic design, well, guess what?
Yeah, I think that would be ideal for us. Obviously, we, we know we need to provide a permanent septic design, so we can't build it without having that, but it would at least allow us to get moving on some of the other stuff, some of the kind of prep site work and that type of thing. But, yeah, it's up to the board to decide.
And, and would that also facilitate getting, if you get the septic design done in two weeks, you can start up sooner, is that?
Well, we would, we would get the septic design, we have to have it permitted and approved through DES, so there's a whole separate process there. We can provide the permanent septic plan to the board for their records, and, you know, we have the location we wanted in kind of nailed down there, and, you know, we have 10 test pits all around there that, they look, look great. It's, we just need the, the two test pits in that particular spot, so that's kind of the last step with the, with the septic design, so.
So, I mean, do we hold them up because of the two test pits?
No.
Well, it's not just the two test pits, it's also the septic design.
Right, but again, the, whatever design they have, it's still going to be all, we don't get approved, this, the state's going to be all part of that.
Oh, I, yeah, I know that.
So, again, it's really not, we can't say, well, we don't like the septic design, because we have no, that's.
We have no, no say, I, I know. I agree.
So, I mean, really, everything here, they've been in front of us.
Before.
A hundred times, well, how many times have we seen this case already?
Just before I was on it.
He doesn't want to see you anymore.
Sure they don't want to see you.
No, neither.
Probably not, John. All right, you guys?
So, what type of conditions are we thinking, aside from the approved DES septic?
Missing test pits.
And missing test pits.
And it's only the two test pits in the 4,000 square area, so you could.
Everything else was approved last year, right? So, this is really the.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, good. I mean, we're going to delay it another two weeks, and then another. Right. Which thing?
And then it gets into winter.
Oh, yeah, it's, I mean, we don't want to think like that, but yeah. Still trying to enjoy my summer.
So, shall we?
So, just a quick point, sorry. You know, let's go for you as an amendment for the existing approval, right? It's not a new one, so, just conditions and approval, the approval motion sort of staying within that context is, you know, what I would recommend. And I would suggest adding in, subject to the effect of the timelines that we seem to not, you know, mention in our decisions, have been a part of the regulations, but perhaps we put that in the decisions time. And one other option is to reference the staff report and conditions that are listed there. Playing copy to surveying wetland scientists, sealed signatures, writing a mudladder, I would agree with that for this, this site, final electronic submissions, fees, and then, of course, the ones that you guys mentioned, or at least the one that you mentioned, which is the two test pits and the septic system.
Well, it's tough to put a timeline on that. I asked them if we could get a timeline, there really isn't one.
We're working with another designer on this, so we're a little bit stuck to their timeline, which obviously, we want it to be as fast as possible, too. So, I, I can't, I can't commit to a two-week or.
Oh, I would say, within a month, we should have a, a, a test pits completed, the design completed, sent into the state, and probably waiting back to hear from the state within a month.
So, when I say timeline, timeline is you have 12 months to complete the condition.
Oh, oh, it's, yeah, it's going to be down to 12 months.
Because otherwise, you have to get an extension, and that's probably not.
I think we did that the first time around, too, so yes, that makes sense.
So, that would be.
Yep, yes.
We, we know things have happened, but, and the regular regs, it's just, people forget and don't listen.
Do we have outside engineering review on what they're doing at the outside of the building inspector?
We just went over it with CMA.
See, they reviewed the plan.
But, I mean, once they're built and constructed, to see that they're, what they're doing is in compliance with the plan.
Yes, I spoke to the building inspector about that, and generally, what we do is we hire a third-party engineering company that oversees the project, sends it to me, sends it to the building owner, and sends it to the building inspector.
To check the.
Yeah, just to report, make sure the rebar is put in correctly, the right type of concretes, you know, all that type of stuff, the steel, all that stuff gets all inspected by an independent engineer, and all those reports get sent to the building inspector as well.
I, I guess the question was relative to the, the site plan, you know, where the location of the parking, or the, you know, whatever, you know, improvements you're doing to the site, whether we need to review that.
Well, CMA, you have that, you have that after their building.
I think these are things like an Asbeld type scenario.
Right. Yeah, that's what he's talking about, he's Asbeld.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, when the project's completed, we'll submit an Asbeld statement that everything is exactly where we said it was on the plan. And then, during the construction, the building inspector is going to inspect as well, I talked to him as well, so he's going to come out, and we pour the foundation, he's going to be there when they pour the foundation. He wants to do the inspections, that's what I thought you meant, you know, to make sure it's done.
There's, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of inspection.
We'll get a, we'll get an Asbeld from him, saying that the foundation was put in the right place, that it meets the setbacks and stuff like that, it's at the right heights and all that stuff.
And then, the building inspector gives you a CO.
Correct.
Sort of certification of occupancy.
Correct.
So, that's the check. I'm not trying to say engineer, but.
Larry, is the, um, conditions on?
Well, so, at the, at the end of my staff report, you have.
I don't have your staff report here.
Oh.
Oh, there.
Pardon?
It looks like this.
It wasn't your last.
It was in the same section, just the very last piece. Yep, that's it, very last page of that.
It says town of Nottingham on it?
Yeah.
So, I didn't realize it was that. Thank you. I apologize. Okay. Because I was trying to find it in the regulation.
Yeah, okay. Oh.
Thank you. All right, folks, we're still waiting on one of you to.
So, we're going to do the, these conditions of approval, plus the two test pits and the um, septic design, the approved septic.
The DES permit.
Okay. I will move to, um, accept case number, uh-oh.
It's okay.
Two four oh one two.
Two four oh one two, uh, site plan review, Shea Concrete, 168 One Turnpike Road. Um, to accept that with the conditions, uh, that plan copies with professional seals and signatures, including surveyor and wetland scientist be included, um, original Mylar with professional seals and signatures be included, uh, electronic submission per regulations and Asbilled as required, um, all fees paid and, um, 12 months to comply with the conditions of the approval, along with the completion of the two missing test pits and a septic design approved by NHDES.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the amendment from Shea Concrete as written in the public notice with the conditions stated, um, by the, um, Strafford Gui, um, Strafford Guidance. That goes back a ways. By our Strafford Planning and the two test pits and NHDES septic. Any questions? Seeing that, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And it's a unanimous vote. Okay?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You have the conditional approval.
That was a long one there, Drew.
Yeah.
As far as we got that old.
You actually went through really good.
Someone's gotta do it.
Yeah, you did a great job.
We've got many more to go in the future.
Uh, let the record reflect that I've returned to the table, um.
You read it.
In my zoning chair duties. Yeah.
Can I bring the meeting back, please?
I just want to work it out. I thought these were.
So, so the next item on the agenda is a conceptual, uh, so that's it for the public hearings. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a conceptual case 23 dash zero zero, uh, 013, Cusano, 11 Lookout Point Lane. Uh, conceptual applications are non-binding between the board and the applicant. They're low level to allow a potential applicant to come in, um, to discuss items with the board, potentially before they invest money and, um, and come forward with, uh, engineered design, either design review or full application. So again, those are not, these are not notice to a butters because they're non-binding. Um, again, they're, they're, uh, just completely informal and at the will of the, uh, applicant. So welcome anybody that come on up. And if you can, just, um, identify yourselves and then just give us a little information as to what you're here for and what you're looking to do or where you're looking for information.
Your brother made it.
I'm Karen Magoli and, um, we have, and my brother Jim, and we are looking, uh, at 11 Lookout Point. Um, we have three lots that were combined by my father years ago and now we're trying to separate one of those lots. Yes.
So were the three lots, did, um, all have their own original deed and were they combined by the state of New Hampshire or was it something that your, your father voluntarily did to himself as to make one lot?
Um, they were bought all at separate times. So I'm not sure.
Three deed, three.
Do we have the deeds?
The quick claim deed here, three separate parcels. Um, I think my dad bought the one we, the house is on 1965. And he bought the certain fellow next door, maybe 10 years later, 15 years later. And then my dad and a neighbor, two lots, we were gonna split by the third lot together. Um, and that fellow relocated to the Cape. And so my dad ended up buying a contiguous lot. So he bought the houses here and two empty lots on his son.
But there's, there was originally three deed lots.
Yes.
And then when this, Mike and me also was probably on the lake. And when the state came, they put the lots together because the same name was on.
Correct.
And then we, down the road, were able to separate it back because the state did it and to go back to the two original lots of record. That's what you're looking to do.
Well, we're looking to separate one of the three lots. So two lots will still remain together.
Okay, so you're just looking to make one, take one lot off.
Yes, we're trying to, um, separate one and make it, you know, a building lot.
Were those three lots combined by the state?
By the town.
It wasn't a voluntary?
So the, the question hinges, so on how you move forward, is gonna hinge on whether these were voluntarily merged. So at the beginning, it doesn't mean that this is actually how it happened. You said they were merged by your, your father. So a voluntary merger is one thing. An involuntary merger is a different process. So an involuntary merger means the town or the state merged the lots because they were contiguous and they were owned by the same person. An involuntary merger means that, that the owner of the property is either merged them, uh, through action or through, um, through deeds and things like that. So that's, that's the case. So, so if they're involuntarily merged, there's an RSA that provides for, um, having them unmerged through, it's a process with, I think, the select board and the, um, the assessor's office. There's a form for it. There's still some caveats to that where there's merged by, uh, use. I can't remember the right term for that.
By action.
Merge by action. So like, for example, if I believe on the, the map you gave us, the old deed or the old plan showed 35, 36, 37 with the house being on 36.
Yes.
Uh, right now, it's tax map 49 is all three of those. So merged by use would be, for example, if, if you have the house on 36, but you have, you know, a barn on 37 and a driveway and, and dock on 35, that could potentially be considered merged by, by action.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna say it was probably my father who, uh, brought them together, which though.
Okay.
More than the state.
So if.
It was definitely voluntary. He bought them from two different people, two different times. So.
Okay, I wanna go, I'm just gonna give you a little, okay, I've been through this before. So, well, personally, what, what you're, what you're going through, right? We've sat on this, doing this a lot with many other lots on the lake. Same thing happened.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So to be clear, like what he just said was that there's three lots. Doesn't matter what time he bought them all, right?
Right.
Bought one in 1951, bought one in 55, one in 61. The state came in and because all the same name was on them all, they put them together and the town did it. And said, okay, this is one lot. Now it becomes 1.3 acres instead of, you know, 0.3, 0.5, whatever. And they just did it voluntarily. They just said, boop.
Right.
That's what we need to know.
Would, would we have documentation from the state if that were the case?
Probably read in the registry of deeds. I didn't, I didn't see anything related to that for your stuff.
Yeah, I mean.
So, yeah, you.
Well, it's our understanding that my father voluntarily put them together for tax purposes.
So.
So if they're. Three separate bills. I'm not really sure.
So if they're.
So what does that mean?
So if you're voluntarily merged, you now have one lot that is pre-existing, non-conforming mean.
Correct.
Doesn't mean our current zoning. So to subdivide it, you already have a lot that's, um, that's smaller than the, the two acre minimum. Um, so to subdivide that even further, make it more non-conforming, it would require variances. So it has to go through the zoning board and get zoning relief. Um, so you'd still probably have to show out the, there'd probably be a number of variances needed. Uh, so the minimum lot size, um, potentially setback issues, the fact that you won't have 30,000 square feet of contiguous buildable area on each lot, I'm guessing based on the size of, they're not 30,000 square feet. So, so there's a number of variances that you would have to apply for, um, in that case, yeah.
Okay, so explain what.
That, that's why we came, we didn't know the next step.
So what does that mean exactly approaching a variance? Like how do we, what would we do?
Well, I'll just jump in for a second.
Yeah.
Write this down. RSA 67439AA.
Whoa, whoa. Ah. Oh, who's kidding?
Did he make that up?
Oh, he's kidding. Say who knows?
Oh.
Oh, one.
I do my homework.
Good for you. Okay.
All right.
So in order to, you, you, that's a, that's a state law.
Yeah.
That said towns can't involuntarily merge. You buy two lots, one for your son, your daughter. The town puts them together for tax purposes and now you'll have only one lot. And so that, in about 2011, the, um, state government said, hey, that's, you can't do that anymore and stop towns from automatically merging lots together. But, um, but sometimes the tax assessor doesn't realize that they're merged or something. It just happened a month ago. So you, um, you have to file for an involuntary merger or unmerger.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I don't know if that's a.
Okay. But that makes sense. Unmerge, unmerge these.
So you, you probably would like to seek an attorney who is versed in this matter that can, um, look at your title and look through the records to determine if there was a voluntary merger on behalf of your dad. If your dad signs up, might want to put all these lots together.
Yeah.
And recorded it. It's one lot.
Yeah.
If you built a house across all three lots, his actions is one lot, even though they weren't merged or unmerged, that action has done that. That's what that, um, loss is. So I would check with a lawyer and, uh, run up the, um, the title and have them do the research. And then if it is in fact that they have not been voluntarily merged by you guys and just by the assessor, then you would make an application to the select board to, um, unmer, to.
Unmerge.
Unmerge the lots. That's the right word. And, um, and then, or restore, restore the involuntary merge lots. That's what it is. Thank you.
There's a, there is a form on the website for that process that goes through that. It's a pretty straightforward process. But again, that, that, your homework, as Mr. Evans pointed out, is gonna be to determine whether they were voluntary.
Voluntary or involuntary.
And, and, and the voluntary is gonna make it a much more difficult potential to get these subdivided.
Presume, okay, this is just a presumption from what I've seen or what I've known, uh, around the lake, is that town merged those lots. Because the taxes back 30 years ago when they did it weren't what taxes are today.
Right.
So they probably just all stuck it. Your dad got one tax bill and just said, whatever, and just paid it. That's what I'd say, everybody that I've known that's been this problem, that's exactly what happened to them.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's probably, it should be. But again, you'd have to go do the research to make sure that that's the case.
Right.
That's your due diligence.
Yeah.
Okay. So basically, the attorney, it sounds to me like the attorney's petitioning somewhere. Is this county level?
History, yeah.
More Rockland County office.
Right, exactly.
They basically say unbundled, we'd like to unbundle one of the three lots, kind of.
And you, we just did this two over on Menendez Road on the other side. There was a lady that had three lots of record. The house was built on two and she had one lot that wasn't there. So she was able to.
Separate.
That one lot off and keep the house on the two lots.
Right.
Together as one.
Got it. Okay.
That's kind of what we're trying to do.
Yeah. And it doesn't always mean that, like, your lots are, are bigger than that. But it doesn't always mean that you get a buildable lot out of it. You might get a lot, but it, it'll still be pre-existing. In that case, it'd be considered pre-existing, non-conforming, I believe. But it would be.
Even if it's involuntary, you still have to find out if you can build on it?
You'd, yeah. So within our zoning ordinance, there's, um, there's a section within the residential agricultural district that talks about.
Oh, right.
The setbacks that are needed and the minimum requirements.
Right.
So you have pre-existing, non-conforming lots of record, which, uh, if these were, were, go through that process, that's what they would be. Um, so they would have less restrictions to them. So that, you know, so less setbacks and, and things like that. So.
Yeah, what, another system, Mary Crisano, whose name is Mike Nellness, she's a, she's a family member into real estate. She's got a cold tonight. She couldn't make it. She might have to be there.
Sure.
So you might see her name and she, I think she made the original.
She in Massachusetts or?
No, Massachusetts.
Yeah, and with conceptuals, again, they're not, they're non-binding. So you can always come in again if, if, uh, if there's still questions or, um, you know, our land's clerk Alana's a tremendous resource, as is Blair, our, uh, our circuit writer from SRPC. So sometimes there's a question that could be asked a little bit in between meetings that are, again, not binding, but to help guide people as they're moving forward.
One of the other things, the involuntary, so if it's involuntary and, um, we would still have to get a variance to make it a building?
Uh, no. So if it's, if it was involuntarily merged and there, and you go through the unmerger process.
Yes.
With the select board.
Yes.
You still may have to show what's on these lots and that there, there's nothing on them currently. Um, but after that, depending on what you're looking to build and what the lot dimensions are, you still may end up needing a variance for, for some setbacks.
Okay.
If, if the lot was totally underwater, for example, just because it's a lot doesn't mean you could build on it necessarily. So there's other conditions for building, you know, septic and, you know, setbacks and driveway and.
All that.
Lots of requirements.
Yeah.
Fortunately. Um, the, some of the town records might reflect the merger, involuntary merger. Um, in days of old, um, they didn't record these decisions, but lately they do. So the attorney would look at the title search and also look at the town records for that.
So the town record is gonna show.
It may show.
It should, oh, it may, it may not.
Record of your dad signing something, said, I want to merge these lots together. That should be in the town files.
Your tax card shows, uh, including lots 1551. Now, that doesn't match the numbers that were on the plan.
No, that's right.
Period of time, they renumbered them.
Moved, right.
Get a copy of the tax card?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, please. You're just full of stuff today.
My homework, dummy.
Little nuggets for them.
Nice to be retired.
The good news is it appears to be quite doable.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what you wanted to find out today.
Right.
You've got a little bit of work to do, but.
Yeah.
My sister Mary, the one who was sick, I think, set this up just so we had the right direction to go and we just know what the next step would be, knowing what we had, what we had, like what's next.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking tonight.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Real estate title attorney that, and the first question, have you ever, are you familiar with the, uh, 67439AA restoration of involuntary merge lots?
Yeah, yeah. I see. All right. I think we're good.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Hey, good job, you guys. It's a good knowledge, y'all.
I don't, thank you for the information.
No problem.
This is great.
My wife used to be reassessing court.
Six mergers and unmergers.
I have an aunt personally.
It's one of the few things in the process that's free. So it's, uh.
Savor it.
Savor it, right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, we do.
Steve travels back.
We do have some time on the agenda tonight. We've, we're gonna be keeping a discussion of zoning ordinances. Oh, sorry, we're, you're willing to stay?
Steve travels.
Discussion of zoning ordinances, um. And, uh, so we have three, three that we talked about potentially, um, three items at least that we talked about potentially updating. Mr. Haney supplied some information for us, uh, for some discussion points. I think this is a good meeting or it's still before eight o'clock. So, um, I think talking about some of these would be good. So we can take them in order. Uh, let's see.
Or would you rather at least approve a couple sets of minutes?
Sure. We'll take, let's take, let's, let's mark the minutes out to make sure because we do have three sets. So we'll, uh.
Just so you've got, shouldn't be hanging up.
So we have minutes of July 24th, August 14th and August 28th. I know Alana had sent out, uh, some edits on the July 24th. I think I sent back one small correction. I can't even remember what it was. I think it was about someone that was in here. Yeah. Alana, did you, did you get my email on that one?
This is your email?
Oh.
The one today? You emailed me today about it?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Oh, today?
I mean, the three corrections you suggested.
Yeah. And then I think I sent you one more.
Oh.
All right. It was very minor, but I'll.
Can I just say it so I have it here?
I have to find it.
Okay.
I think I actually have service.
Oh, no, I did see it. I did see it. Yeah, I did get that.
Uh, just the votes, just to confirm what the vote numbers were. That's what it was. Um, okay, I can't remember if Buzz was seated.
Those that aren't, that doesn't have video, so.
Okay. So it, it does matter. They're non, it's non-substantive anyway. All the votes were, uh, fine. So.
But since then, you've been able to get good recordings. Since that day.
Someone fixed it for us.
All right. So I move to approve the minutes of July 20.
Sorry, I, I had one more.
Not. Not.
Buzz is listed both under present and absent.
Oh, you're right. Good catch.
He was, he was absent that meeting, so.
Everybody was there and, uh, okay.
Sorry, that was the only-
Their spirit.
So he was, so he was absent.
He was absent that meeting, yes. Sorry for the interruption.
No, 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 that was a really good catch. I didn't catch that at all. You sure you don't want to be the secretary on this?
I'm set. So, you want to move forward with that one? You want to move forward?
I will. I move that we approve the amended minutes of July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Sure. It's a motion by Mrs. Bascom, and a second by Mr. Severance. Any further comment? Halls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Halls opposed? Any abstentions? So it's six zero, I'm sorry, five, yeah, six zero one for one abstention. All right, minutes of August fourteenth. I have two edits.
I have a few, we'll pull up a good first.
Line one eleven. Just to comment on this, so that only, I don't know if this is the correct as to who made the motion and who amended it, but just for the board, so this isn't a correction to the minutes, but only those making the motion can amend it, and then has to be, the amendment has to be seconded by the original person as well, so just procedural thing there. Just, I had that flag to talk to everybody about. So line one-
Is the person that makes the motion the amendment?
So that should have been skipped to make the-
Don't remember that from Robert's rules of order, but that's okay.
The amended motion. It shouldn't have been me to amend it, it should have been you to amend the motion, is that correct?
Oh.
Because you originally made that motion.
That was my understanding of, uh-
I think you un, unmotioned and then remotioned.
No.
Nope?
No, he didn't. I just jumped in and amended it willy-nilly.
My understanding is, once the motion's made, the, the, only the original two people can actually amend it or withdraw it, now you have to vote on it.
I'm just gonna sit here and be quiet.
I could be wrong.
Too many motions, I'm gonna need some drumming.
I, I can follow up on it. Again, it, it doesn't come up very often, but I'll, we'll follow up.
I'm just gonna sit here and be quiet.
Line one forty-four, where it reads, commented on some notes that he had previously received, that I think the way that, I'd like that changed to be submitted by, so Mr. McKinnon commented on some notes submitted by Mr. Veal, because I did, I submitted them to the, to the board, not to the applicant. And that's all I had for that set of minutes.
Please let me know if I know about that, because I've probably pro for years.
On line sixty-four, I think that should be signage, not sinit, lighting or signage.
Yeah.
Then, a few lines with the same thing. One seventy-nine, it's written Tom Hyde, but I believe his name is Tom Hyde, E-I-D. He's a member of the Trails Committee and Conservation Commission.
He's still?
E-I-D. That also appears on line one eighty-three.
So H-E-I-D?
Uh, no, E-I-D.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No H, just E-I-D, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Also, line one ninety-one, I'm not sure about Bobby, but I know it's Gil Stevens, G-I-L, uh, G-I-L. And, let's see, and then one ninety-five, correct spelling is without the second E, gerrymandering, not meandering. Small edit. And, I think, I have my name highlighted on line two thirty-eight, because I think I might not be sure if I was the one who made that motion, but I just highlighted it and didn't make a comment, so I'm not sure.
Two, on, this was the twenty-eighth?
If nobody else remembers who made that motion, then I'll assume that it was me, but I think I just have a question whether or not it was me who made that.
Wait, which case do we look at, two?
That's line two thirty-eight, that was the continuation of the Shea concrete.
So you're saying you're not sure if you remembered that was you?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I was the one who made that motion.
I'm gonna say yes. You're the motion machine over here, you, you do these well.
Trying to be efficient.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
When we need a motion, we lean on Drew.
Two twelve.
Man, that's all I got.
Two twelve. Actually, you are the one who made the motion to continue. I have it in my, my notes.
Okay, perfect. All right, I had not written down who made those motions, so.
I do.
Probably because it was me.
I do.
Thank you for checking. All right, I'm set on that one. I will motion to accept the minutes as amended for Wednesday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second that.
The motion by Mr. Stevens and a second by Mr. Cummings to approve the minutes of August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four as amended. Halls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Halls opposed? Any abstentions? Anybody? No, you're, okay. So that motion carries six, uh, six zero, seven zero. Can't count tonight, so sorry, everybody. So one more set of minutes, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. I've got some minutes, but I'll let somebody else go first if they'd like to.
I didn't look over these yet, that's my thing.
All right, I'll, I'll jump in. Just to the, to the, to the title of it, so in the past, with the joint meetings, looking back at August thirtieth of twenty-three was the last one, we did it as like Nottingham, Nottingham Planning Board slash Zoning Board of Adjustment Joint Meeting. And I think that's what we titled like the minutes as well, so it'd stand out in the folder. And then, for members present, next to Mrs. Bascom's name, it says Vice Chair. I was gonna see if we could amend that to be, say, Planning Board Vice Chair and Zoning Board, or ZBA Chair, just because it is, again, it's a joint meeting. Line nineteen. Just add some verbiage after this, and wanted to discuss with the Planning Board as the board is prioritizing action items for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Line twenty-four, just changed the, instead of saying Mr. Curry, say Chief Curry, and then line thirty-two, saying St. Vaughn Woodman, the police chief, just changed it to Chief Woodman, thirty identified and the others present with their, with the respective titles and positions. Line, I think that's the only two spots that it shows, but if it shows other places, we can correct it there, too.
Well, they're identified as Ms. Woodman and Mr. Curry through that paragraph.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, any, you know, spots, just Chief, Chief Woodman, Chief Curry, please. Line seventy-seven, just changed this a little bit. Mr. Veal, congratulate Mr. Demerit on, on his sixty years of volunteer work with fishing game. One very minor change, line ninety-nine, oh no, did I get the wrong number wrong? Can't find it now. There was somewhere it was supposed to have changed with a D, and it should have just been changed, but now I think I wrote the number wrong.
What line was that? It's ninety-two, line ninety-two.
Yeah, ninety-two, the very first statement.
Yeah, ninety-two, there you go. Penmanship is not my strong suit. That's all I had.
So then my only follow-up to that would be, if this is a meeting minutes for a joint meeting, then Kevin Bassett ought to be listed under members present, not others present?
Correct.
Since he's a ZBA member?
Correct.
And I think he's the only other ZBA member who showed up, right?
He is, yeah, he is an alternate.
Yeah, so we could put him up in the top as, as a ZBA alternate.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
And that is, yeah, that's all I got. I will motion to approve the-
Wait, do you want Matt and-
Vaughn.
Their names listed as chiefs and the other, in the present as well? Or they're, do you want it?
No, for the other, for others present, I think that's good, because they're identified there. So then when we say Chief Curry, we've got full name already in the top.
Okay.
And that's, he's the fire chief, and then Chief Woodman is the police chief, so, so I think it just-
I just want to be clear on what you were asking for with these.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, and yeah, and the others present, there's no change to Matt Gray, Fire Chief, and Vaughn Woodman, Police Chief, but everywhere else in the document, just refer to them, please, as Chief Curry and Chief Woodman.
Excellent.
That's it.
Go ahead, Drew, as amended.
I will make a motion to accept the minutes as amended for Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second that motion.
Mr. Second man.
So that's a motion by Mr. Stevens and a second by Mr. Cummings to, to approve the minutes of August twenty-eighth as amended. Halls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Halls opposed? Any abstentions? No, that motion carries seven zero as well.
Okay.
All right, back to the discussion of zoning ordinances items. So, three items that we've, that we talked about potentially tackling this year or looking further into. One, detached ADUs, two, steep slopes, three setbacks for pre-existing non-conforming lots. We can take this in any order, but since we have an order one, two, three on here, we can try to discuss them further as they are.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
And Mr. Haney did provide us with, there's a little packet in your folders, detached ADUs, of course, towards the end of it. We have some comments and things to consider if we do look forward to potentially do this. It's not that, it would look like a-
It's that, right in front of you.
Yeah, it's another one. So, so there was, there was discussion and comment brought up about, do we, does the town want to start considering looking at allowing detached ADUs, and if so, what would that look like, and what, what areas in the zoning ordinance would we need to potentially amend? So, I guess first question is, well, if anybody-
Do you want opinions, or you just want to, we have an open discussion about it, or we just-
Yeah, I think this is open discussion, and then, because again, if, if the board's opinion at this level is, you know, yes, then we're gonna keep working on it. If, if the majority of the board is, is a hard, hard no, then why would we spend extra time on it? So, I guess maybe the first, first part, I guess we could always just kind of go around the board and see if, if each member wants to have discussion on this, on this, this item for this year.
Yeah, I'll scrap some of it.
So, I'll just go in order. So, Mr. Severance, or I guess, anybody that feels like they would like to have a discussion, continuing discussion to potentially allow for detached ADUs, please raise your hand.
You want?
I'm just gonna stop, stop, hold it for-
We're discussing, do we go to discuss it further?
Yeah.
So currently, we allow attached ADUs.
Attached, only.
And we're just discussing whether or not we want to allow-
Detached.
Correct.
Yeah. So again, alls I'm trying to do is, again, as we have limited amount of time from now until warrant article season, if, if we put a bunch of effort into this, but the, the majority of the board is a hard no, then, then it's foolish for this year. So, so I'm just trying to gauge, so, so whatever we're, this little, this is kind of an informal vote right now, doesn't mean that things can't change, once we, if we do spend time on it, it's just to say, do we spend time on this now, or not? So, anybody that, so for anybody that would like to continue the discussion about potentially amending the zoning to allow detached ADUs, please raise your hand.
So, just to be clear.
Yes.
Like, I am, right now, I am against having detached ADUs. So if somebody wanted to have a discussion tonight on whether we think the, just the whole discussion on attached ADUs, non-attached ADUs, if we're having a discussion on just that general topic, that's what we could all just hash out tonight.
Sure.
Whether we push it forward might come out of that conversation. But whether you, and you're asking whether we, while we're talking about this, or we're just gonna keep the, the norm the way it is and move on to another subject. That's what you're asking us.
Well, I'm, I'm open to, I'm open to progressing however, however the board sees fit. I was just trying to make sure that however we move forward tonight with any of these, it's constructive and, and the board's time, so. We can keep it like that, we can just have an open discussion right now as to people's opinions and people's thoughts, and then kind of do a poll if we want to move forward with any of these tonight after, at the end of it, that's fine, too.
All right, let me tell you that, for, speaking for self here as the Chair of the zoning board, who has seen the detached ADUs come forward, I'm in favor of this because, based on the location of wells and septic and other structures, sometimes it's not possible for a family to have an ADU attached to their house or within their house, and their only option, when they have sufficient land, is to have a detached ADU for them to be able to have relatives on, on their property. I, it, neither one that I'm aware of has required the development of another driveway. It's not adding an extra access to their property. It's strictly allowing for them to build another structure on their home, on, on their home, on their property, that a family member can, can live in, and that they can be a help to. So, I'm in favor of it, and the state law does allow for it.
So, would you be in favor of something that allowed for detached ADUs only when they could prove that a, an attached ADU was not possible? Is that something we could do? Is that something we would be interested in, if there's?
Wouldn't people wanted to use their property in the way that they saw suitable, because it's their property?
Then you don't need a planning board or zoning board.
I think it's simple, I mean, that's-
That is.
Absolutely.
I, I am uncomfortable with that, only because sometimes the need to have a family member close by is the driving factor, but you don't want them necessarily on top of you. So if you're making it so they're, if you have the choice of building on, then you have to, I think is, and they have, like I said, sufficient amount of land. So if you've got somebody with, I don't know, seven, eight, ten or more acres of land, there's really no reason why they shouldn't be allowed to do that.
Totally, sure.
Um, with two acres of land, as our minimum lot size is, that may be a little more of going, you know, you have the space here, we're not gonna give you the allowance of having it separate and creeping into the setbacks, you know, because if it's, if it's like they need the variance for the setbacks to do that, that may be something to, that needs to be discussed a little bit.
I, I, I think we should allow them for a couple of reasons. One, I think Drew's idea is a decent idea, but it's adding a rule to our regulation, and it's just, it was just another snag. I think based on the stress that we're having right now for the families in Nottingham, with housing with their children and their elderly relatives and all that, we need to do whatever we can to help them get this type of housing approved. I'm interested as to why you didn't like it, Sean.
Oh, thank you, I was gonna tell you why.
I'm not interested.
So the condition of an AD, and I understand, you know, if you're gonna have an ADU and it's gonna be deattach, detached. Now, if that ADU is using the same septic system as the existing house, all right, same well as the existing house, all right, maybe I'll, I can prefer that to the things. But let's say just because you want to put an ADU, and you're gonna say, well, I can't attach to my septic system, and I can't, you know, because my well's on the other side, but I-
Didn't Dale answer that for us? We asked him that question, and it was the number of bedrooms, total number of bedrooms.
Sure, but you could add to your existing septic field to add more bedrooms to it.
Yep.
So, but still keeping it under one septic system. Because what happens is with a detached ADU, when the, we talk about having your grandparents or your parents live there, right, your kid living there, great for the next fifteen years, let's say. After that, it becomes a rental property, all right? Now, technically, it's not gonna be a rental property like an apartment building where you have a cluster, but now you're gonna have a rental apartment. Now, that ADU is now going to become a auxiliary, so you might have that ADU, have two kids living it with, you know, a starting family. Again, not a bad thing, but you know, it's not the same, you know, it's, it's almost like a little development, but you're not having a development. So I'm thinking about it in the long term. If you have it always attached, you know, the chances are, the people that are gonna be living, if they're still attached to your, the main residence house, you're gonna know who you're, who's living there. Then if you don't have an attached, you might be more likely, or the potential person, might be more likely to have a stranger or somebody that's not directly family-related. So when I look at this, I don't always look at it as towards a family, even though that's where, where when, when the subject comes up, it's always brought up as, oh, this is for the family, this is always for the family. But here as a planning board, we can't look at ten years. We're supposed to look at, what, fifteen, twenty years, the actions we're gonna take today. I appreciate that. And I see this action maybe becoming more of, here's another source of income for somebody, because now they have their own apartment. Now, I know housing's short or whatever, but again, that could change, but you're literally, you know, adding, now where do we put the limit? If you have an apartment in Nottingham, like you want to have a separate apartment, you need four acres, all right? Two acres per building.
John, they only have, one percent of our housing is apartments.
I'm, I'm, I'm giving you my reason, you can, we already had this discussion the other night, but this is where I have my question on- And I think that's legitimate, good looking to the future. Whether we go to different ADUs when we do a difference. We've already increased the size of the ADU. When I first started, it was only four hundred and sixty feet. I mean, that was a little timing. And now we're at seven eighty or whatever, I mean, well, we change that later to become a thousand square feet.
How long, how long have they been allowed in our regulations?
It was a state law.
Yeah.
ADUs, twenty years.
Twenty years, okay, so that's long enough.
I mean, I was going, I was going, twenty-
So, have we seen that happen in the town? So, but there haven't been detached ADUs, so there hasn't been the opportunity to see- So, but there haven't been detached ADUs. So there hasn't been the opportunity to see that bear act. There haven't been official, yeah, okay.
We, we, the, the town hasn't allowed them. I think the RSA's potentially allowed it, but the town has restricted it. So some, within the, an RSA came out from the states, our 674, 71 and 674, 73 are ADUs. So that's, some of these changes have been handed down. So again, we can make some stuff stricter, but the state can also set rules that we have to abide by as a town that we can't be stricter than.
What restrictions are we gonna put on it if we do have an ex, an outbuilding ADU? Will it all be unlimited with just one single ba, one bedroom? That's it? No two? No, cause however you develop or make that-
2017, is that what you said?
There has to be a limitation, but I, I appreciate the idea that you're looking forward.
Limitations we put on there.
Right.
Again, don't get mad. We gotta make sure those limitations aren't, can't be reinterpreted through the zoning. Cause as that board changes, you know, the zoning can overrule whatever, even what the ordinance says.
Yeah.
And then you get into that other, you, you see how, there's a snowball that could happen with it. And that's where I-
Become two bedrooms.
Sure.
It'll become two-story, you know?
Addition might come on to it.
It's gonna grow.
And I appreciate all of that and, and looking forward, there's nothing wrong with that. What I'm talking about is some sort of a solution to today's stresses that the people of Nottingham are feeling.
Yeah. And, and I appreciate, so I think to Mr. Moore's point, and I, I think we get this argument a lot before the board for, uh, for, um, you know, subdivisions too, you know, you'll have, oh, I want subdivided off this parcel for my, my children and that angle is used. But again, while we try to, we can't really take that into account when we go through like a subdivision either because the next day, as soon as it's approved, it's sold off to somebody else and, and it goes away. So, but that's, that's why we don't, or there's back-
You only need 50 feet of frontage now to get your, to make, cause you're doing a backlot subdivision. So we just open up all other parcels of land for a potential house.
Yeah.
Now they could do that for their family and say, hey, guess what? I'm just, if you have that much land, why don't you just do a backlot subdivision? We're gonna make it so you only need 50 feet of road. You can go out back, make your two acre, you can build your house. It's a different line of record. Now it doesn't become a rental property, it becomes an ownership property.
But we're gonna decide what we're gonna do with ADUs. I, I think that's a terrific idea.
This is my reason why I don't like, asking my opinion of why.
Yeah.
I do not like, and I will not be in favor of having an addition because I think we've already done enough over the years to, with our ordinances to try to help people with pieces of land to do other things. This might be a cheaper way to go, but in the long run, it might be a bad thing for us.
In a detached ADU, I, I wish, maybe we can get these numbers from, from the billing inspector. I don't know how many permits a year are being pulled for people to add ADUs as it's right now. And I would think that, right, I would think an attached ADU, maybe I'm wrong, but my thought is an attached ADU is probably cheaper to do than a detached, even if you have a garage and the fact that you oftentimes can use the same heating system, the same, well, the same utilities. You're not doing extra drop electric and things like that. So if, if we're, so we do allow for it now and not knowing what the demand is already for attached, I think it's hard to say, well, we really should be allowing detached U because aside for the, the items where things don't fit, because of lot configuration and wells and such. And to Mr. Moore's second point, or item that he mentioned, when you can add on to the existing septic and well, I think that's one thing. But if you're having to drop a whole new septic system and a whole new well and/or well for the detached ADU, that's more, in my opinion, a multifamily, whether you call it ADU or not, because you have a whole separate piece thing that's, 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 uh, operating independently of the primary, primary home. So I'm on the fence on this totally. I just, but I think these are great talking points and things to consider. And I, I think the third item that was mentioned about square footage, right now the state is, so the state used to say you can't make anything smaller than four and a square feet or, or towns are making it really small. So town, the state amended and said, well, you can't make it, you can't require that it's less than the skies. And then they increased that to 750. So I think one way we could potentially really clamp down on the fact that we want these to be ADUs is to say any ADU that's over 750 square feet will be considered multifamily and will abide by the multifamily regulations.
And that's because of the state rule of 750.
Right, right. But knowing that it also could change.
Yeah.
Is it legal to put a clause not subject to zoning so that they can't go look for relief?
Uh, yeah, I don't think we could. Yeah. By putting in the zoning, they could, yeah.
Again, every board changes, people change. I mean, I've been here long enough to look at everybody that's new here, you know? When I was, let me look at the, all the changes over the years when these things happen. Even some of these ordinances in our, when I started our zoning for, um, thing here, I think it was only maybe 25 pages. And now we're at 58 or 60, uh, because over the years the board has changed, people's opinions on the boards change. You get a more conservative board that's more environmentally friendly. Well, there's more articles that add in there during those periods of times. And these are things that you can, you know, you kinda look forward to where we're gonna go with the future. So any changes we make, I really feel that we should sit back and look at the, we know there's a positive, really kinda look at what are all the potential negatives of what our actions could be. And if, if the positives 75% outweigh the 25% negative, well then that probably is gonna be a good thing. But let's make sure we, instead of jumping and say, because at this moment-
We're in a housing.
At this moment in time, we're there. 15 years ago, were we in a housing crisis? No. Will we be in 15 years? Maybe not. We don't know.
Yeah.
And this is what I'm just saying is what, this is a decision that we could make and, and taking something out of zoning is a lot tougher than putting it in.
When you, when you just told me that those, there's 50 pages now, the first thing that jumped into my head is when do we have the meeting where we start cutting regulations? Let's take some of that stuff out of there.
Never have, never, never have.
Very, very difficult to do.
And that's-
Cause it, everything-
Go ahead, Blair. Well, I'm reading your notes. You got really good notes here.
There was an application before the board many years ago to, they had a big lot and they wanted to homestead it. Homesteading basically means you build a bunch of houses on a piece of property, but nobody, it's all, it's all one ownership, but there's no lot lines. Okay. So what happens when the kids get married or whatever? How do you bust this thing up? And it never went anywhere basically because of that. You, you lose all of that capability that you thought you were gaining for, as John said, 15 years. That's about it.
I gotta ask though, what's the negative of a family having a ADU that is no longer for family members, but becomes a apartment?
For, for a lovely college student.
Why, why do you feel it's a negative?
A firefighter who can't afford a house in the town or police officer.
Would have, both those residents become now, like I'm watching people in, you know, in general in town that, I know people in town that have bought other houses, right? They have their main house and they bought this house over here and they have this house here. And they're not living in either of those houses. They're just B and BM or whatever, you know, they're, they're just doing this and, you know, so they're just apartments. So me as a neighbor thinking I've got a residence here, I'm gonna have somebody that lives here and now I have two potential apartments next door to me. Or I have a renter over here or something that's, that's not the community that Nottingham, well, I, my residential, this, yeah. I'm not trying to be, you know, in an apartment complex or, and again, and that's probably a little extreme. And I take that, I'll bring that back a little bit, but you know, I'm, that's how I'm kinda looking at it where I like to know my neighbor that, that guy's gonna live there, you know, on this. I don't wanna know that I have two houses next to me. And if it's one house next to me renting, that's fine, but maybe possibly there's gonna be two houses renting next to me.
Yeah, but some of those renting can stay there day after day, year after year. Or if not Airbnb, but-
They might not. I mean, again, it's-
Do we have any ordinances about short-term rentals in town? I didn't think so.
No. We're adding more.
But what you're saying, yeah, we're adding more levels of stuff and it's, I'm-
But there's nothing stopping your neighbor from buying the property next to you and not living in it. There's not, you don't have, so you can't blame that on an ADU when they can do it just as easily with buying a two-acre parcel with a house on it.
There are provisions in the ADU ordinance that say that you, an owner has to live somewhere on the property.
That's with attached.
Pardon me?
Well, that's with the, the attached ADU, the owner has to be in-
And should be added to the, on it, detached as well, that an owner is living somewhere.
That is when they, when the, when you're going to permit yourself for an ADU 10 years down the road, 15 years down. Who's there to police it?
What? The state law requires, so.
Again.
Regardless of whether it's attached or attached or-
Right. Another level one inspection, something else.
I meant as far as living within it.
And my thought on that, that I've been clear on that is that I think that should, other towns do it. That should be an annual permit. Doesn't have to have a fee, could be 10 bucks. Just something that, the reason for is not to make another layer of bureaucracy. It's a, it's to give the town the ability to potentially enforce if they ever have to. So if they're not pulling the permit, saying that, yep, they live in the ADU and they're renting out the home, fine. Or they live in the home, they're renting out the ADU. That's fine too. Life and, and I'm talking about like code and, and life and stuff like that. So if they're, if they're not getting the annual permit, all of a sudden they don't renew it, the town is, has the option. I'm not saying that they'll go do anything, but I'm saying they have the option to go say you're, you're-
Kick somebody out. That's not gonna happen.
You're in zoning and you're, you're in-
That's like what they're doing, things by the book with the construction.
But I guess again, that's, that's not, the enforcement side of it isn't for us to answer.
No, no.
And again, that's gonna, that's gonna vary by the select board and the billing inspector at the time, but, but it at least gives them a tool that they can use to start that action.
Sounds like that would be multiple inspectors. And multiple enforcement arms that, that need to do something. And I, I just look at, if you build it and they come, you got it. You're not gonna tear it back down when the permit all of a sudden expires and, and the need for it doesn't exist. You're gonna rent it out. And I don't have a, I don't particularly have a problem with that. But it just makes every single, it has the capability to make every single, single residence lot to residences.
But not everybody has the acreage to be able to do it. That's what I'm saying.
Size or the relatives or-
The way I read this, anything, any lot that is not non-conforming can have a detached ADU.
They can make it within the setbacks.
State law.
Well-
Unless they go to for a variance.
You're on the zoning board, tell me how it works. I think zero, zero feet is, is adequate now, right?
For an ADU?
Well, I, I, the person wants to use their land. What are you gonna say? If they're trying to use somebody else's land, you gotta say. But when they're using their own land, there really isn't any say that can happen as a result of the Newington decision. I mean, that's just the way it is.
But I don't think that a ADU, a 700 and whatever, square foot structure is making it a second residence per, like two, it's not a two-story home is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And what, and to-
It's a two-car garage. That's what you're looking at.
And, and not having the second septic and septic, second well, I think is, is a great way to look at this. Just saying even that they have to be, has to have adequate septic with the main structure and be combined with the well from the main structure.
But they overflow occasionally and, and then you have to do something. What are you gonna say? No, you can't do it?
To, to get an ADU permitted, you need to show that your septic has sufficient capacity for the ADU. And if it does not, you have to provide a plan that could do that.
Here's my plan.
That's right. And if it doesn't fail, if it doesn't fail, then you don't need to-
I'm gonna tell you my plan. I'm gonna take out all other closets in the present house. Then I don't have a bedroom. End of story. That's all it is. Definition of a bedroom is a closet.
That may be, but you may also have a family that lives in a three-bedroom home that has eight kids. What are you gonna do there? Charge them more?
At least that's presently allowed. Now we're looking at something to allow something else.
And this goes to what John was talking about. We can come up with lots of, uh, features and benefits, right? Here's why it's a good idea, but here's why it's a bad idea. We can look at all of those things. Next, we're gonna talk about mailboxes or something. You know, is it two addresses? Are they gonna get 348A and 348B?
Yep.
You know, let the family, let's, let's do what we need to do to help families stay together.
I, I, I think I wanna say a couple of things. You know, 26% of our population is over 60 years old. We have 350, this is from the community profile stats, SRP, S-
RBC.
Thank you. 486 veterans, 352 people with a disability, 319 households living below poverty level in our town. Right now, we had since 2010 to 2022, 588 more people in the town that births, there's people growing older, people moving in. But these are people that live in this town. This is our residents that we're working for here, that we're not helping. So 129 new homes were built for 588 more people over the last 10 years. We're not having this, boy, the town is growing so crazy. We're, we're, our taxes went up 12% last year. 59% of the people can't afford a house today. Most people that bought a house last year can't afford to buy the same exact house today. You got elderly people living on fixed incomes. Average social security is $1,782 per month. That's a problem. That's a problem. If they're coming from a house and you get a divorce, where do you go? You kids, you grew up in the town, you've lived here your whole life. Where do you go? Get out of the town. Get out. We need housing for these people. An ADU is a perfect solution. Detached, attached, bigger. What if they have two kids? What are you gonna stick, two kids and, and divorce, I'm gonna stick my two kids in a 750 square foot place? What if it's a people that have owned a home their whole lives that couldn't afford it anymore? And they're, you're gonna stick them in this one-bedroom thing? Can't they have an extra room for a den for their, you know, watch TV, whatever?
But we don't, we don't limit, nowhere in our ordinance do we limit the number of bedrooms. I don't think you can by the RSA, but-
750 square feet only fits so much housing and bedrooms. So there should not, I don't think there should be a limit on bedrooms there. What if people have two kids? What if they have a boy and a girl? You guys stick two boy and girl teenage kids together to the same room?
The septic system provides that.
But again, we don't, I don't think anybody's proposing-
If you're showing two more bedrooms, then you're showing a bit septic for two square foot.
I don't think anybody's proposing that, that, that we're limiting the number of bedrooms. Again, it's square footage that we're limiting. After that, it's code that limits and the code changes, so that's a life safety is the thing. And I, I'm assuming 750 probably is, is like two bedrooms max. Maybe it's bigger.
No, one bedroom.
One bedroom.
It's a studio.
Yeah. If you will, a studio.
It's small.
I live in 500 square feet.
750 is bigger than my first apartment and I had a bedroom, a kitchen, a living room and a bathroom.
That's right.
That's right.
I, I will let you know that there are, a strata right that I, was the, certain right as well, they live in two bedrooms and it's 750 square feet.
So it can be two.
So you can limit the bedrooms for these and there's a 750 square feet. What you hear is people asking for more because it is small. Especially if it's an elderly person looking at downside and have a lot of possessions.
From an empty nesters with a three-bedroom home, they've got stuff.
But the other, the other side of this is, is, you know, we're making a lot of argument. So we do plan, so that's a piece of this is just trying to plan for the future and, and what the community might want. But I haven't really heard from the community like a, a cry to allow this. It's come up now and again. And we've had a handful of, you know, variance requests and I have no idea how many, uh, permit requests to add ADUs that are within compliance. So I don't know what the demand is. I mean, we're making a lot of arguments that people wanna stay here, but-
I've had two inquiries this year.
Yeah.
Because of the law.
But two out of 5,000 people that are here with 2,200 homes.
The law came up to change it.
Sure.
I, I sold 16 new houses in Manchester in subdivision. Nine of the 16 had a secondary person living with them, a daughter, a son, a parent or a client.
More common than you think.
Way more.
Oh, no, I, I, I understand that too.
My dad made it really uncomfortable, so I wanted to move out.
I did too.
Some of these kids are still living there because mom and dad make it way too difficult.
Not all, not all single-family housing is suitable-
Can we get some numbers from Dale as to how many permits over the last few years have been pulled for ADUs?
Where, where are you at? Where's the ADU? You're gonna take your bedroom and kitchen and, you know, give it to grandpa or mom, mom, kids?
Oh, sometimes people do, but they have to do-
Detached is a really great option to expand the potential housing and its type of housing needs.
But we're, but we allow ADUs now and we don't- But we're, but we allow ADUs now and we don't, I have an understanding of how many are actually being utilized, and if, and if cost is an item, the cheapest thing to do is add on to your house, not build a separate structure with a separate heating system, separate, all of that, all the, everything that comes along with that, so. We're gonna get some information from the building inspector to try to get some granularity on numbers, I think that'll help guide the discussion too, but, so I think, I think it's an important discussion. I personally would, if, if we move forward the detached, I think there's, again, an annual permit is a good idea. That'll also give numbers to the town as to how many exist and, and, and everything, and allows for some enforcement if there are life safety issues and things like that, because again, it's different when it's an owner-occupied structure than it is when it's somebody else that's on the site.
And, and item six says, uh, for property containing ADUs conveyed to a new owner who wishes to be in the ADU, the new owner applies for a CO.
Yep.
So that's kind of already spoken.
It's not though, because that, like, like Mr. Warren spoke, you can buy five houses in the town. You own it, you could, maybe you've lived there for a year, you don't convey it, you just start renting them out, both out, and you move into the other house. And then you move into another house, and you, now you own six properties, all with ADUs, you're only living in one, but because you only had to pull that permit once, you're out of compliance, so you've basically just created a bunch of rental properties.
And we have, one percent of our town is rental properties and no rental properties have been added in the last ten years, not every person can own a house. In fact, in today's market, only fifty-nine percent of the people can afford a house, so they need a rental, so if we wanna put, if we wanna hire someone for DPW here in town for twenty-two dollars an hour, where are they gonna live?
Well, we don't know how many rentals have been added because you can only pull numbers for rentals that are done legally, so we, we know there was some, at least one conversion that was done with four or five units. But after that, you know, if, if they're just being rented and they're not pulling a permit for it.
Yeah, and even the single dwelling units that presently exist with multiple owners, or that have, that owner owns multiple of them, we don't know how many of those are being rented.
Right.
There's no, there's no rental requirements in town.
Well, personally, as long as people are paying the taxes on their property, then what.
That's important.
It isn't.
No, it isn't.
No, but what I'm saying is, if, if, if people need to rent out part of their property or their home in order to be able to pay their taxes and keep their tax, taxes going in and survive, to be able to buy groceries and all this other stuff that you need day to day, what does it really matter, is there not having loud parties, trashing up the neighborhood?
Where are those requirements? Where were those requirements?
But what I'm, what I'm saying is, why does somebody else have to be in somebody else's business if they're minding theirs? Coming home, at paying your taxes, having a nice quiet neighborhood, they're not out spray painting graffiti everywhere, why do you care?
Cause if, even, cause even if they start doing that though, how, what's the, how do you enforce it?
How do you enforce what? It's a home.
But if they start doing all those things you just mentioned.
It's not a home.
Yeah, that's, that's nine-one-one.
But what, what, what stops them?
Right.
We have no noise ordinance.
No.
The town has no noise ordinance.
No code in this town whatsoever for.
There's no noise or, it's so, it's, we, we just went through this with a number of things, you're right.
You can violate.
You're right.
Absolutely.
That's my point, so, but.
This is not.
I've spent a lot of time writing an application for a housing chapter, and I'm listening to the conversation here, wondering why.
Correct.
What do you want me to do with this money if you don't even want an ADU and you're.
Exactly.
Why do you want me to write a housing chapter, what is it gonna say?
They don't want any houses.
It's gonna be Manchester.
No, no.
What am I gonna write on a, on a twenty, thirty-page housing chapter?
Sure.
So the taxes.
Good question, Blair, this is what we're here discussing.
You are voting to have me do this, it's, it's due in a couple of weeks, do I keep doing this?
We are the planning board, we're guiding this ship, okay? The taxes went up twelve percent last year, if they go up twelve percent every year, they will double in six years. Your eight thousand dollar tax bill will be sixteen thousand dollars in a mere six years. Some people can't afford that, you're on a fixed income and you retired twenty, you've lived in your town your whole life, you've retired, you're on a fixed income, and your pension or your, um.
We heard it.
Social Security does not go up twelve percent per year, so every year.
Why not?
Go, go down, go down to Hannaford and see how many seven-year-old people are working bagging groceries to survive. These are our residents, we need to do something for our residents, period.
But, but I, I'm hearing what you're saying on that, but, um, people wanna stay in their own home, they don't wanna be put into another one.
And if they can rent out an apartment to help with their taxes, then great, let's let them do that.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Who's that hurting, who's that hurting?
And to jump off of what Blair told us already, just because you're a renter.
A renter doesn't make you a bad person.
No.
We can have renters in town, they're okay.
It doesn't, but it can.
Yeah, I know, but suckin' the billionaire, you know.
And it sucked.
Yes.
I don't want that again, and I don't want it next door to me.
I don't blame you.
But if I want to, I can buy the next door, so that it is under my control.
You know, and one of the things that Chris is talking about here, Mr. Evans, um, is that there's a way to generate revenue here in town without raising taxes. And that's development from the planning board.
What kind of development are you talking about?
We've had two hundred new houses or more since I moved in and taxes have gone up.
Taxes have kept going up.
So development, development always costs more than non-development.
Not, not.
If it's, if it's, if it's residential.
Caution isn't the case.
So, no.
Residential development costs twenty-eight cents.
Residential, sorry, yes, residential, single-family homes.
Elderly housing costs twenty-three cents for every dollar generated, we have no elderly housing in the town, there's thirty percent of our pop, twenty-six percent of our population is elderly, we got no housing for them.
Well, that's because they're in a house. That's because they're in a house. They don't want to go out of their house if they don't have to.
They don't wanna leave the town, but where do they go?
No, they don't want to leave their house. Chris, not everybody who's elderly wants to go in senior housing.
I'd be curious.
They'd be happy to just stay where they are as long as they can continue to pay the taxes.
As long as they can continue, so.
I'd be curious if.
Having the ADU and having a rental income is one option that they can generate more income, you're seventy years old, you can't go out and get a job besides at Hannaford's or whatever, bagging groceries.
They can't afford their taxes, they can't afford this, they can't afford to make the, uh, the cost to put an ADU in. Where are they gonna come up with a hundred and some thousand, you're gonna take another mortgage against their house to build an ADU to try to make rent, it doesn't make any sense. If they're poor, they can't make it, they can't do it, so what's an ADU gonna do? Nothing.
I'd be curious.
Because they can't afford it, because that's what you're saying right now, can't afford taxes, can't afford to do it, pointless.
I'd be curious to know if, like, you know, we do have some, some alternative housing, which are condos that were built, built on Route Four, I'd be curious to know if any of those had been occupied by Nottingham residents either downsizing, because that's a, that's a litmus test. It's a, it's a great housing market to sell a home, and if they had a potential to move into something that was no maintenance, uh, and downsizing, without, actually, those are, some of those are pretty big, it'd be interesting to know if any of those were, um, were purchased and.
What was the rental prices on those properties?
They're condos, they're, they're owner-owned.
The rental price was three hundred and ninety-four thousand, there's twenty-four of them, um, nobody that I, I mean, I don't know if everybody knows where these are or has driven by or seen these or has like received complaints from like, wow, this condo is ruining the character of our town in this small-town nature, um, so at, at three hundred and ninety-four thousand, you need a hundred and fourteen thousand income to qualify based on today's rates with ten percent down, not everybody makes a hundred and fourteen thousand a year.
That's for sure.
But we're, but we're, part of what we're talking about was people downsizing and elderly, so, I was saying, had, were any, did anybody sell their houses in Nottingham that were retired and moved into those because it was a downsizing and allowed you, and allowed you, and allowed you to stay in town? But a detached ADU is probably gonna be multi-level because it's, we're talking about above a garage.
Not necessarily.
Unless that, they stay in that, unless they stay in the house, which is a ranch or something, but.
No, I mean, I think part of what the vision is with detached, that you could put a ranch-style ADU. I mean, there's a lot of people out there building, you know, prefab, just get dropped in.
Sure.
Well, and I know the one that came before the zoning board was attached to a garage, it wasn't above the garage. So, that was on, that was on the level.
Let's make sure we keep the rural character of Nottingham, because that's always brought up every time, we wanna keep our rural character, very important in this town. But let's start putting all this stuff in.
When people can't live here because their taxes are too high, then they're gonna give up on the.
I'm sure everybody'd love to live on the Tuckaway Lake, but they can't afford it because the prices of the houses are so damn expensive. So, sorry, it's just not available to you. Fact of life, you can't say, hey, guess what, because it's Nottingham, let's make it the cheapest houses we're in the state. Go to Epping, go to Raymond, go, there's some things that say, hey, not everybody can afford to live in Nottingham, it's a fact of life, it's what happens is happens. You know, we're fortunate that we all get to live here, and I bless that, and I love the way the town is, and I wanna keep it the way it is, you know, right, and everything that goes on here, but I don't think we have to change everything that we've done over the years to try to satisfy this certain percentage of people, when there's a large majority of percentage that's liking it. You know, I like the way the town is right now, there's a lot of people that I know that like the way the town is right now, and how we have it, and the way it is. And again, if I couldn't live in this town because I couldn't afford it, so we're gonna change all, everything for all the other residents because of a, a percentage?
I think it's a little strange, it's a little strange to think we're gonna get overrun with ADUs now.
I know, but I'm just.
You might get eight.
You might get a year.
No.
You know?
If I heard about two, after June when they were looking to pass this thing, if I heard about two, there's more than that coming, and I think one of them went before the zoning board.
So you're saying there's a demand.
I, I think the building is.
There's a demand.
There, there is now a demand for whatever this is, and the one I think she's talking about is, is just going down the street here, buying a manufactured home and placing it next to the, what they already have, it's detached.
Isn't that, isn't that the indication that there's an obligation by the planning board to plan for the demand and, and make us, make a change?
Hello.
That's certainly one attitude, but Dover, here we come.
Dover.
Oh, it's extreme, you guys, you're being extreme.
I mean, I don't really care.
You called us Manchester a few minutes ago, you're being extreme, you know, a couple of ADUs are not gonna make us into a big city.
Give me forty years, I don't have forty years, but give me forty years, it'll be go, what Dover is today, I mean, that's, that's the problem, quote-unquote, with zoning and, and the stuff that goes on, if you really want it to be no zoning, you can do what the hell you want on your property, then we can go home and not do this stuff.
But Chris just gave us some good numbers today too, right, and he showed us.
Those are numbers, yes.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and he, and he showed us how many people in town need this type of service.
Those are numbers. Why are we?
Housing is supply and demand, you know, where we, the zoning board has choked off the supply so that the demand has gone up and the prices have gone up.
I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that.
Yeah, that, that.
You haven't been on the boards long enough to say something like that.
I, I, I'm saying it, I'm saying it based upon the current s- stats only, you're right, I haven't been here to say that, but we keep adding more restrictions, we never reduce the restrictions to allow.
But that's part of what we do here, so that people don't just go willy-nilly and do whatever they want, you have to, as Blair was saying, be planning and be thoughtful in planning, and I don't, I'm not looking at the ADUs, um, John, as strictly because somebody can't afford something else, I'm looking at it.
I didn't bring up money at one bit, oh, that.
Oh, well.
Our new, our new house averaged a seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
Wait a minute, I'm still talking, timeout, I'm still talking, please stop interrupting. For, for me, the issue is if they have enough land and they come before the zoning board asking to put on a, attachment to their garage for a family member, because the septic is on one side, the well is on the other side, and their garage is on this side, going to be on this side, why would we be saying no to that when they're not even encroaching in on the, um, the setbacks?
If you could, and again, I have a stipulation when I sit in there, if you could build that ADU and you could attach it to the septic system and use the existing well.
Yeah.
So that these two properties aren't separated.
Correct.
So that if these people in that ADU overflow or run so much water, the, the whole leach field goes to crap and, and die, somebody's gonna be responsible, I mean, there's, I don't wanna make it that it's so simple to have one, you know? Cause then it's just, I mean, you're putting an ADU on because of a, a certain situation of why you need it. I feel like ADUs are just gonna become more rental properties.
Correct.
That's, that's the way I, I look at it.
I, I know.
Even looking at, I know another case in town, I'm not even, you know, pitching you this, but they had a garage and they had an auxiliary apartment up top that they were living in while they were building their house, and now it's, now it's a rental property that they're renting to somebody, and, you know, nice guy, whatever, but again, they've already just already just did the whole thing right there.
I know, I know.
It's not related to them, now they knew it.
I know a family here in town where, where they have a house, and then on the, his mom and dad have a house, and out front, there's a house there with their daughter in it, and their grandchildren, and everybody is there, and in between there, there's another house with grandpa is in that, in that territory, that's families keeping together.
How'd they get three houses on one property?
They were smart. They were smart, and maybe it's legacy, maybe it's old, I don't know, but I'm saying that we, maybe we can do something to help families stay together. My family blew up into a million pieces, because we don't have, I can have no space to put anybody in my home, there, one's in Manchester, the other one's in, in Dover, uh, we all get, have to split up, right, but why can't we build a small ADU over there and keep somebody in the home? We should help them do that.
I think we need to get some more information and revisit this at another meeting, or we're not gonna get anything else discussed.
Yeah, so, so again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get some numbers, just so we have an idea of numbers, I think it does help with the discussion, at least with to see, understand like a demand side of, of how many might be added, and then, you know, if we move forward with even a draft language, we would still have to hold up public hearings, it would still come down to a vote of this board whether or not a warrant article moves forward, and if it does, ultimately then becomes the voter's choice, which are the residents, so, um, you know, but even doing this, that makes the zoning warrants longer, so, again, we've added things to the zoning, a lot of it's reactive because of what we've seen, and, and then the town says, no, we don't like that, and, and it's part of stability for people that do live here. Uh, and have already expended money here, um, to make sure they understand what the community kind of, the zoning is, and if we change that drastically, which I'm not saying this is, um, that changes that, but I do think there's some things we could add into it to avoid some of the shortfalls that have been mentioned tonight, um, for best practices, but we'll get that, the permit numbers from the building inspector, um, if they have them, and we'll, we'll bring it back up at the next, uh, the next meeting.
At the next meeting, are you not here at the next one, are you?
I'm not here at the next one.
So how about the meeting after that?
Well, so, the way we'd set it up is we'd, if we had time at this meeting, which we did, and then if we have time at the next meeting, we'd have continued discussion, and, and then we have a workshop potentially scheduled, which, uh, we can keep or cancel depending on how far we get on these, and again, any work we do on these now just takes work off our plate as we, as we get into the holiday season.
How many cases can we have next meeting? At least two. That's what I was thinking.
What, what are they? The, the Millstone one? And the.
Cause it would be nice to know if we think we'll have time for this, because then we need the information for, from these, our questions, you know.
Where is the Millstone?
I also wonder though, with the, just a thought, so if a developer came in with a major subdivision and we do allow for detached ADUs, is there gonna be an incentive there to put these on in a development, and then is that just gonna drive up the prices even higher for, for those?
That's not the whole purpose of an ADU though.
But you can, you can, you can market, I'm just guessing, I'm just, you know, you can market the twenty new houses with, with rental income.
Well, you just gave them all an idea.
I'm sure that's not my, I'm sure. Some of the capitalists is gonna, gonna find it, so, but we'll, we'll get the numbers and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll get back to this, but there are notes on here for everybody to take a, take a look through, some talking points beyond what we just talked about tonight, uh, and, and so I just encourage everybody to kind of read through those and continue to come back with, uh, thoughts, and again.
That's a good point, that's, I think you've got a good idea.
So we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about a couple, a couple more, um.
Hold on, I'm just gonna answer.
Oh, Alana.
Oh, um, uh, so for the twenty-fifth is the York, um, Millstone Road, and also not even this is part of the plan for that date, but we'll see if the engineer will be able to get the updated plans, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, I apologize, I won't. Yeah, I apologize. I won't be at that one again.
You think just contact us? The new person just contacted us today?
Yeah, just today.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying it might not happen.
Okay, yeah.
The new person is a new engineer?
Yes.
Yeah. Who wants to?
I don't know.
I, someone familiar, I know I've seen.
All right.
So that might be continued again?
Yes.
Excuse me, how many continuing, continuing?
Or when was it originally accepted?
The fourth continuation is coming up.
When was it originally accepted?
First time is sixth in June.
Okay. So we're just three months in.
Hopefully we can give them enough time to get a roof on that then. Before the snow flies.
Well, it.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't, it hasn't been there for twenty-five years. It's another year.
The, the next item we were going to potentially talk about is, uh, steep slopes. We have a little bit of verbiage in our zoning and subregs now about steep slopes, but there's no real, um, there's no real protection form except for the fact that you can't count steep slopes in your fit for building calculation. We did add some of this information, I think, when we updated subregs, but not in the zoning. And usually it's, uh, advisable not to try to zone through subregs and site plan. It's, if you're going to zone, you do it through the zoning ordinance. So, uh, Mr. Annie pulled some, some luggage. We did have kind of a draft article for this. And then there's the one from OSI, um, and we looked, and he pulled a couple of examples from Farmington and Stratford. So neighboring communities, um, that do have, have ordinances on this.
Oh, is OSI, is that the one that the steep slope protection district is from? The, the.
No. This is language that I inherited. I think you asked me, yes.
We, we paid for this a long time ago, but when you look at it, it was very, very close to the boilerplate of OSI. We don't have one now.
Okay. This was just stuff that.
This would be something we'd potentially be adding.
It's being proposed as of right now as an overlay district.
So within.
It's not the current one.
Okay.
The only thing you have is, and said related to steep slopes is that it's not, twenty-five percent for Craig are not allowed to be counted towards your thirty thousand.
So this was still one of our action items from the last master plan was that we were supposed to, to take into account for this and add protections for steep slopes. Um, we've done it in some ways, but not in others. So again, I think what you're seeing a lot in towns are those areas of land that used to be considered unbuildable or because of cost or what's there. The marginal areas, um, with developers getting creative and based on the housing prices and, and what you can do. Um, you're seeing these areas come forward for development now. Although they may be, you know, much more expensive to develop or may have unique, um, issues, characteristics that, that, uh, may really make them not suitable for, for building. For example, if you have a slope that's over twenty-five percent and that's going to be your roadway, you're usually having very deep cuts and fills and then very wide, um, grading to account for the, the, to get to back to the slopes that are, um, stabilized. So.
So you want to add that to your definition of fit for building? There's a note that Blair gave us here.
Well, adding, so.
Entirely new. All of this stuff is.
I know.
So we have some of this already. I mean, like unfit for building, we have and impervious surface, we already amended. We already have, we had, uh, adopted a definition for impervious surface previously, which I would keep ours versus changing, um, changing it now, changing to that one.
So the, the two unfit, the unfit for building and fit for building, I put into this to make the point that if we did move forward, uh, using the term steep slopes, that we should amend those two definitions.
Yeah.
They already exist if you don't.
Yep.
Amendment to say twenty-five percent.
And I think.
Amendment to say steep slopes. Because right now there's excessive slope of twenty-five percent. Uh, and the other one says do not have slopes of twenty percent or, or more. One of the things you do in the zoning ordinance when you're going through it to, if you're a builder, is you'll just do a quick word search, steep slopes. Because I got steep slopes on my land. What, what are the provisions around steep slopes? It's going to be a sixty-page document, right? Where do they always pop up? These wouldn't pop up. So I, it's, I think it's a helpful way to, to help people navigate your document. And yourself as well too, because you're not going to, you don't build all sixty pages.
No, I don't. No.
So.
Makes them more consistent. Yeah.
It's a minor thing and creates two of this larger.
So we don't need to repeat the twenty or of twenty-five percent or more. Just should say in the ca, in case for unfit for building, it should say steep slopes, common drainage ways. Because you already have steep slopes.
Yeah, you could put the twenty-five percent in. It's just more so that that word and phrase, phrase is captured.
Don't confuse it. You go to the definition for steep slope, it's twenty-five percent. It's always going to be twenty-five percent, no matter what they look at.
But we don't have that. We'd have to put that definition. We'd have to put the definition of steep slope in too. Yeah, yeah. So if you do that, yes, I agree.
And same with fit for building.
Yes.
Does not have steep slopes.
Right.
Exactly. And then below that, if we're really getting into it, there's two other definitions I haven't looked at and we should probably look at is grading, plane and building height and see how that fits into this larger conversation. That's just, that's just a placeholder.
I, I just want to say something.
Oh, no.
Eighty percent slope. Okay? Too steep for anybody?
No.
So that's eight percent. That's eight percent. We're not talking about eight. We're talking about twenty-five.
Well, there's eight percent in here for roads and driveways and all kind. I mean, every, every block in town has an eight percent slope.
No.
You can't take that up.
The reason for that is because Sophia Way, there's houses that could not get fuel deliveries in the winter because their drivers were too steep. That was a brand new development within twenty years or so, maybe twenty-five at this point. So those, the slopes of driveways were put in for septic pumping, because we're all on septic. You got to be able to get a septic truck to the house. You got to be able to get fuel delivery and ideally an ambulance or fire truck. And the roadways, same thing, that, those come from, from, you know, safety standards. That's not, we're not pulling those out of thin air. So, so again, we're not talking about, nowhere in this tonight are we talking about the eight percent or the driveway side of things. It's, it's about land itself for new development. And whether or not we, um, whether or not we, we add further protections for those areas that are excessively sloped.
I, I assumed that those were all protected already and they're not. I mean, who would want to build on a twenty-five percent grade?
So I think I can talk about the case because we, two case, the last two cases that were approved that were major subdivisions and new roads, both had the roadways go up through areas over twenty-five percent. And that's why you saw thirty to forty foot cuts and fills.
And those fills had very long.
Yeah, yeah. We talked about that.
Reaching into wetland.
Yeah.
Wetland buffers.
Twenty-five percent looks like. If you have a house with a walkout basement, it's going to have more than that eight-foot drop over twenty-six-foot width to get a walkout basement.
Sure.
We, we shouldn't be taking, we're choking out the zoning by making more restrictions.
So when you, but what I'm talking about, so we would potentially add protections of, okay, areas that are over two thousand square feet of contiguous area or it, it puts a threshold on it. So it's not just saying, well, you have that one little bump that's at twenty-five percent. Because again, the drainage structures, everything else, your potential erosion that's going to occur, just the site disturbance that has to occur to be able to get through these areas, it's substantial. And, and that might not seem like much, but when we just saw developments go in and they show us their grading and, and plans and they are literally doing thirty and forty foot deep cuts and thirty and forty foot deep fills and they're grading out a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet or more to be able to get stabilization, the town's usually going to end up with that at the end. So at some point, that's going to go to a town meeting to approve the road, accept the road, or it gets changed to where the select board allows it, approves it. The drainage structures may end up with the town and they become, so again, this is just a discussion point. It's pretty common, it seems, with other towns around us. So that's why we looked at the other towns is to say, well, developers that are coming here and built, is this different for them? Would we be unique? Or are they pretty much used to this and we're kind of the outlier? And it seems like we're the outliers, that we don't really have enough protection for these areas. And some of this is supposed to be viewscape, but you can really get into these and make them very long, very narrow. You know, where you protect the ridge, ridge lines, uh, and viewscapes and things like that so that people that are living here now don't have to look at, you know, brand new house sitting on top of the mountain instead of the mountain.
So we could potentially protect these areas so they cannot be built on?
You can, sure.
And is there a way where we could make it so that the town does not have to, um, absorb the roads for any of the developments? Or does the town always have to?
No, my understanding is, so the last town vote, I think, where it went onto a warrant article, uh, petition warrant article to accept a road was that it, uh, was, was not accepted.
Right. But what, what I'm saying is, is there a way of making it so?
No.
I don't think so, but what we did, what we've done.
It's a petition more an article.
To, to ask us to.
But what we've tried to do on some of these newer places.
How to do it in the town vote for, you got it. That's, that's happening with the camper.
But with some of the newer subdivisions that have, have, that have HOAs, we've required that within their HOA documents, they maintain the drainage structures.
Why can't they maintain the roads?
Well, initially they do. And then if, but if the town accepts it, the town accepts it. So. But with the, the drainage structures and things like that, the thought was, at the time from the board, is basically that a lot of these drainage structures are getting more complex. Um, they're not just a simple thing that you go mow, you know? So there's going to be a cost increment there in that to protect the town in the future that we're not going to get all these, especially because then you're probably going to need more resources from within the town to be able to go maintain.
Well, we have.
Or replace the drainage structures.
To take care of the roads. That's why I'm saying it just seems crazy that this development goes in and it's for the development, the people, and then the town has to now plow those roads. I don't think, I just think that if you're in a development, you take care of the road.
But the people in those developments are paying taxes.
Well, I get that.
Town services.
But the open space subdivisions, characteristically in other towns, um, I'm going to guess ninety percent of them, they, the homeowner association maintains the road, the grounds, the well, the septic, the drainage, the whole thing. It's, this is an anomaly that our town is taking roads on these HOAs, I think.
What, those, none of those developments that we have sold are, have the HOA fees that go to take all those. None of the houses Falzone's by the subdivisions, he's selling those houses saying, by the way, here's in the covenant, you're going to have to pay an HOA fee of two hundred and fifty dollars to pay your house. That's not part of any deal the houses he's making.
No.
The, the HOA is always attached to the, um, the, it's an integral part of the purchase.
And again, none of this.
Take the HOA away.
Fourteen forms that you're signing.
Except.
Just go. None of those developments have.
But that's where I'm questioning now is because I know one development in town, the one down this way, um, they dissolve their HOA. So I, I don't know, but each one is done differently. That's why we now have legal review on. But also is to who's responsible for the open space and who's holding that easement. That's why usually it's not the HOA because again, you know, what is it? The, you're, you're patrolling yourself basically at that point.
I talked to somebody in town last night that told me that their HOA fees are collected with their taxes.
No, that's not true.
No?
That is not true. They are taxed on the community property that is part of that subdivision, yes.
But the HOA fees are attached to their mortgage.
It could be in their monthly payment where it gets, uh, in the PIA where they're adding in the fees.
It is in the monthly payments.
It, it could be, it could be added.
But this gets away from steep slopes. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
It does.
So one thing about steep slopes, if I may.
Of course.
Um, one of the problems with saying no to steep slopes is we know that there can be remediation. I know that there are some folks want, right across the street from me that live way up on a hill. And that's why God invented switchbacks. Right? This, the driveway goes like this. They can make it up that slope and no problem. They dragged a house up that slope. Want to be careful that we're not too restrictive.
And some people want views and, um, kilks, hills where the kids to slide down or place to dump off their leaves or whatever.
I, I think it's different when you're talking about a house versus a development that wipes out a swath. Don't you think so?
I do. I agree with that.
It's totally different to wipe out the swath.
Right. But I don't want to restrict a, a single family home, say, oh, we can't build there because there's a regulation that says.
So, so the applicability of this, this is key. So again, the way this was written was, was that in mind was it's not going to stop you, current homeowner, or someone coming in with just one house. It was for major subdivisions and new site plan applications only. So again, that, that can be changed, but that's how it was drafted was to, okay, just target the ones that are probably going to have pretty substantial impact. It's not a single driveway. It's going to be most likely a roadway and.
Right.
Yes, I would.
Dozens of driveways.
Grudgingly at times, but I would say, I would kind of agree with the fact of destroying this huge piece of land for the road. But like what you said, there's lots in this town that are, they're five acre blocks, but the park's on a hill. Now, if the guy wants to put his driveway going up the hill and do the switchback and do the whole pavement and spend all that money to get on top of that hill, you go right ahead.
Should be allowed.
If the propane truck can't get there to heat your place, bad judgment on yours, but you could sign the waiver like we used to make all the people that were building on the lake, sign the waiver that, that, and by the way, because of your slope, the town is not responsible if your house burns down and we can't get up there with a fire truck because the fact that you've exceeded a twenty-five foot slope. The fact that you lived on these emergency lanes, you signed an agreement that says, you know, the town might not make it in a snowstorm. So hopefully your houses are burned down. Hey, and they signed off and they built their houses anyways.
If, I think if we do do a, I, I thank, thank you. You're right about that for sure. Um, if we did do, um, something with slopes that, uh, we should also, uh, make a, um, uh, the planning board allow a conditional use permit that we could, um, not send them back off to the zoning board to, you know, if there's reasonable case for this, they want to, part of the house wants to have a view and then mountain top home in the subdivision that they're doing, like Falzone has, um, that Kentucky Way Bridge with, you know, up on top of the, the mountain top there, which.
It's not on top of the mountain top. They're cutting twenty feet of the mountain top off to build the entire thing.
To, to make the road great.
And they're filling it, right.
Eight percent was, so they had to cut that down to get that.
No, they, they cut it down to put the houses up there.
Same thing in Fort Hill, they cut thirty feet off the top of the hill.
Right, which you generally hear a lot of pushback from the people that are living around that now. So again, I, I think this strikes a balance with the major subdivisions and the new site plan applications. If we were to do a, if we were to do a conditional use permit, I think what that would look like and the verbiage associated with it would have to be pretty clear. Because again, you know.
Under extenuating circumstances or, you know, could, I think one of these had something, you know, if reasonable engineering was done to, you know, warrant, you know, that, that particular application. I, I, no, I read it somewhere.
It's like it broke the record until it skips it before. Falzone had that extra page of the zoning ordinance now.
This is about two pages.
Well, we might be able to strip, and you might be able to strip some of this down, you know? So maybe we, maybe you strip some of this down. And this is longer because we have Farmington's and, uh, which they did, definitely did not do word check on and, uh, spell check and then Stratford's, um.
Does it say that somewhere here?
What's that?
That it's Farmington or.
No, no, the next page will be, it's Farmington.
How do you know?
Next page after that, sorry. There you go. That's Farmington. The next one was.
Blair, are you looking for some guidance?
The first one was our draft.
You were doing?
The town's draft.
I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, I think there's, there's comments and questions in the, you know, in the margin, um, of the, uh, the document and if you want me to keep going forward, there are some things that you need to look at. Uh, because, you know, there is, there's just general questions.
Yeah. So I, I think, again, so I guess what I would encourage everybody to do on this, because I do want to get to the third one tonight as well. We've had some good talking points on this one as well for tonight. I want everybody to just take the homework lesson of go home, digest this a little bit, read Blair's comments. He put a lot of time into, uh, going through these and pulling some additional and trying to give us some comparisons. Again, we can move forward. We can table, uh, we've got a lot of leeway between here and there. And just because this is how it was written now, this can be, if it makes sense to strip it down, strip it down. You know, I always say, try to go back to applicability if like a case came before us and, and you were trying to interpret this, you know? How can we make it clear for the applicant as well for, as for the boards, you know, us and then future boards? So.
And can I ask a question?
No, no, no. Yeah, go ahead.
Devonshire subdivision down here at one point in time came before the planning board as a site plan review for golf course. Okay? That was going to be a golf course. Now it's a hundred and four sub, uh, home subdivision. That, um.
Where is that?
We could have a golf course.
Who is this?
Huh? Huh? Where was this? Devonshire.
Devonshire? You're saying Devonshire?
Devonshire, excuse me.
No, is that what you're saying is Devonshire?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know where that is?
No.
Francesca Way?
Yes.
I call it something else and I can't use that term anymore.
Sure.
Okay. So, anyway, Devonshire, that landmass that was there was going to be a golf course, and it disappeared from the planning board.
It went pffting.
I, because I don't think we knew how to handle something like that. But then it came in as the subdivision. And one of the things that originally hit me when I was sitting here was, how are they going to cross the wetlands to get there? Well.
They do.
They, they, within stuff, bridges, whatever it is. So, I'm wondering what help the district provides in this case for steep slopes when we see, seemingly had some sort of an overlay that was, existed for wetlands and streams and all that kind of stuff.
So, what's the question?
Well, we didn't, as I say, we didn't have a lot of protection for the streams and the wetlands at that time, so we, but because of a case like that, we've additional.
We didn't have the maps, you know, so it kind of is overlay district.
But we didn't have the zoning to really protect them. Like, the dredge and fill didn't require anything beyond a permit.
They wiped it out. Didn't have anything to do with us.
Say that, we, we don't seem to have a lot of personal opinion here. Speaking for self, I don't feel like we have as much control over protecting any of our land, because once, because once that, you get a developer who says, well, I got my DES permit, I got my wetlands permit, I got this permit, it's like, everything you want to try and do is now taken out of your hands because they, they weren't able to take away that area of the road.
Right.
I'm sorry, I just.
So, was it important to have the district or the.
They're going to have the housing board now, the state housing board, just get overruled.
Oh, in terms of how you approach steep slopes, whether it's overlay district or whether it's just the regulations?
Yeah.
You know, I had said it as before, you know, it is an option, because I didn't know if this was something that the board had chosen or if it was given to you that way. So, I just wanted, you know, you guys.
Given to us this way.
Yeah, so through him, I was saying to all of you was that you can do it as an overlay or you can do it as just general form standards that are, yeah.
Yeah.
The town way.
Okay.
You don't have to do it overlay district. But it, it, you know, it's similar to what the conservation overlay district, so in a way it is.
Well, that, and that's why I'm asking the question, and I guess I don't see the wetland overlay district as helping us. Maybe it does, but.
Well, there's clearly regulations in it that are first best to apply, you know, as to.
Seventy-five percent of them.
Has, has to meet, right?
Right.
Otherwise, they might have to get a variance, they have to get a conditional use permit, and the same holds true here. You could, you could just flat out say, no, you cannot build a house or put a road on slopes greater than twenty-five percent. And if you wanted to, your, your sort of, your offering, your outlaws is the board appeals. You appeal, you know, regulation. But if you want to do it in a, in a, with a different way, you have options.
Yeah.
There is no, there's no greater strength doing it as an overlay district versus just general.
A lot of what it creates, I think, is almost like a best practice, so it, by having it in there, I, I think we've started seeing this more and more with the wetland areas, with the stream protection district area and things like that. You start seeing the developer, like, okay, we see that they have it in here, so we are going to try to avoid that, and, and as opposed to before, they'd go punch through it and say, I'm just going to get my, my permit and, and that's the quickest one for me and I'll just do that. So, now you do see those areas being protected more. So, yes, you have some that might go to the, the zoning route and then, or the state appeals board and get their way anyway, but I think it's a starting point to at least say, this is what the community is asking for, this is what they want, and, and please do it this way.
I, I think honestly, it depends on how bad the developer wants the land and how much money they have.
Mm-hmm.
Always comes down to money.
And what they're going to sell it for.
Well, the money, you know.
It, it won't be affordable housing if they have to go through.
Oh, well, there's nothing that's affordable there.
How do you get affordable housing?
That's a different conversation, but yes.
High density.
That's not the steep slopes.
High density buildings.
No, it has to be publicly funded. That's the only way you're going to get it.
No, that's, that would do it too. Thank you, comrade.
So, so the affordable housing that's out there right now, a lot of it's done with this low income tax credit.
Imagine that.
And they will fund up to seventy-five percent of a project.
Thank you.
In most of elderly housing, affordable housing, workforce housing projects that are, are done with these low income tax credits.
They have steep slopes.
Rent controls, so that, you know, an elderly person on fifteen, the whole.
I don't think so. I think it's just.
Just a point of order.
Yeah.
That's, if you guys want to talk about that after the meeting.
Yeah, we can talk about that later.
Yeah. So, we'll, uh.
Well, I mentioned this because Blair.
I hear it.
Said he's writing a master plan and wants to know what we want to put in it.
Or a grant.
And we want to talk about affordable housing or workforce housing.
That's not master plan, it's not on the list.
It's part of the master plan.
We need Blair to put that in there for us.
So, it's in the, so he's writing the grant, and that, I think that, what, if we do get the grant, it's going to help us determine and start shaping those, those ideas for the future, is to actually get community input and see how we can, you know, what the community wants, and how do we start accommodating that. Because we do offer some of that stuff through the open space development now, and that's the only area where I think we offer a density bonus, is if it's going to be workforce housing, housing. And I don't think anybody's ever taken advantage of it that I'm aware of.
It's not profitable.
Because they can make more off the other stuff.
The master plan said we want elder and assisted living, mixed commercial and residential uses in same rural buildings. Mid village nodes, whatever that is, I'm not sure, density bonuses for workforce housing, provide housing opportunities for a variety of owned and rental houses that will be affordable to a broad range of age and income groups. That's in our master plan right now. That's, that's what the master plan is about.
But we could add, we could add ten thousand houses, you know, I don't want to get off topic, but there's so many external pressures affecting our housing market and the costs and the values that are here now, and what they've creeped up to, that, again, add ten thousand houses into the town, and I think you're going to still end up with the same problem. If it's a desirable place to live and people have the money to live here and it's close to other things, you're going to continue to see those prices higher, they're going to bounce back out, so I.
Location, location, location.
Yeah, right. We're thirty minutes from four hubs, Rochester, Manchester, Portsmouth, and Concord, so.
Dover.
Twenty minutes to Dover, so it's, it's a.
Just because he didn't talk highly about it.
So.
Oh, my god.
Let's move on to the, so we don't have any write-up for this, but we did talk about setbacks for pre-existing non-conforming lots. I think this is what we talked about specifically, I believe, if my understanding was correct at that meeting, was specifically just the easing the septic, the septic for pre-existing non-conforming lots of record, reducing it from twenty feet to ten. So, we just have to change the table and add that.
If the zoning board is going to go by the, the state book, the state says ten feet.
Mm-hmm.
So, we now just coincide with the, with the state says, that a lead shield has to be ten feet from the line.
Right.
And that's, that's why we're having the conversations, because the zoning board had a number of.
I think we should make a motion to.
In one of the houses I had, that was one of the issues.
Take the twenty feet setback for a septic and take septic out of that restriction as a man-made structure and go with the state requirement. That is my motion.
You can't do that.
Yeah, I don't think we're there yet.
requirements.
It has to go into a warrant article.
So, where I was saying that.
How do we get, how do we get a forward movement on an idea that we're talking about that's very simple that we all agree to?
If you wait and listen, he will tell.
So, I think in Article two, C, three setbacks, it's that little chart, we would pull in septic systems out of that last area. We'd add a new box or whatever you want to call it, row, say septic systems, pre-existing non-conforming lots, ten feet. All other lots, twenty feet. We leave it, leave it where it is. Because again, the thought process there is, if you have a conventional lot, two acres or more, you should be able to keep that away from, from the lot line.
But again, the state regs say it's ten feet.
But we're allowed to be more strict, so it's.
Doesn't mean they're right.
No, I'm just, but if, if they ask for relief, they're going to get it from the zoning board. Not, it could be next zoning board or whatever. They're always going to get the relief because they're going to look at the state regs and say, sure. Because that's what I would have done if I was on the board. I would have said, hey, the state says ten. We say twenty, you need relief? Sure, I'll give it to you.
And what do we know about septic design and ground?
Nothing.
Drainage, nothing, and design.
But I do have somebody currently, oh, not I, I shouldn't say it that way. We do as a town have somebody who has that experience on the zoning board.
Okay. Are they, are they in favor of the ten foot?
I believe so.
Hello, we're going for.
How do we make a movement? We're talking about changing zoning and how do we move to say, right, let's change that?
You make it a warrant article. That's what we're discussing, is, is writing up warrant articles for the voters to approve.
So, all you want to remove is the septic system words and change the twenty to ten feet.
For pre-existing non-conforming lots of record.
Correct.
Well, that, I'm saying that it should just be ten feet across the board.
Well, and that was my, that was the next place I was going.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, so originally.
I don't understand the need for this table.
Sure. A number of years ago, this was, it was fifty, and then it was, and then it was, it was increased to fifty in like twenty eighteen. It was reduced back down to twenty in twenty twenty, I think it was. And there was a lot of discussion about it, and then in our joint meeting, we only discussed the pre-existing non-conforming. Again, my thought is, if you have a conventional lot of record that's two acres with thirty thousand square feet contiguous area, why do you need to put the septic ten feet from your property line?
Correct.
Because again, that's, that, again, could you make.
There could be any number of reasons for that, but yes, you're right.
Sure.
Every, every subdivision we see now is not a two, basically not a two acre lot subdivision. It is point eight five, point, I mean, they're under one acre, so.
Because you don't allow it.
Because, well, again, I'm just.
Well, they're non-conforming lots that had existed before zoning.
He's talking about.
Because they're open space developments.
Well, I know, but they still have to prove that they can do all that.
See, now you, we, we allowed an open space development, all right, twenty years from now, they got to move their septic because their leach field failed and stuff like this. Now they're going to fall under the hardship, because they're, again, they're now on a small lot that we allowed them. They might need to go from now from zoning in order to get the twenty foot setback.
Guess where they're going to go?
They're going to go to zoning.
Well, not only that, but eventually they may end up in that open space that you're all protecting.
But again, just another hindsight of, you know, when open space came out, everybody was great about protecting.
No, everybody wasn't. No, everybody was.
That was just because cluster division.
It passed.
Cluster development sucks.
It passed.
Right.
So, it passed, and it became part of our thing, so.
And everything passes.
Well, again, that means, the majority.
Don't go getting him going on that. That was terrible.
Forget it. Six months.
No. So.
Go ahead, keep going. So, in your answer, or, excuse me, to answer your question about why do we need the chart, that was actually made a few years ago when the way everything was worded before was incredibly confusing to people. So, it was just set up to make it a quick look, where do you fall? This is what you got.
Yeah.
That's why we did that.
No, no, I understand. But, but now if everything's going to be ten feet or fifty feet, it seems like for pre-existing lots, it's ten feet, and for all other lots, it's fifty. That doesn't seem confusing to me.
Well, and.
If, if.
You said, why, why, why do we have?
No, 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 no. I, I was saying that as to, we can get rid of this, rather than making it, those tables still exist with those numbers in it. That's all.
Yeah, the table was added just for clarity for everybody, because it's a lot quicker to find it there than it is to read it through, through the various areas that it was originally.
But even that, that table, I don't know where the clarity is, except between all other lots and the pre-existing lots. It was twenty feet.
You should have read it what it was before. This was so much better. Right? Because you were part of that.
But, but I think, I think what happened is the words that were there, you change, the intent of this thing was to change the words that were there to make this now appear pretty good. Usually when you see a table, you'd expect all the numbers to be different in there. That's all I.
Oh, gotcha, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm sure this made it less confusing, but I think you also changed the, the numbers and the words and all that.
I see. And so you can basically combine the first two, since they're the same numbers, and then leave the, just change the way the third one shows up.
Can I ask why the pre-existing non-conforming lot setbacks were changed to fifty feet in twenty eighteen and then changed back down to twenty?
No, it was, I'm sorry, it was, it was the all other lots, pre-existing non-conforming lots. I don't think it was changed. I think that was twenty. It was the all other lots. It went from fifty to twenty. So, it went, it went two fifty and then it went down, back down to twenty for the, for that.
Yeah, I think that in the Zreg is only on all pre-nonconforming lots, the normal setback for anything is twenty feet, so it's just coinciding with everything that's already there.
Right. It was just give one box, like when you're, if you had a, a survey of it, it was a, you know, one clean line of twenty, 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 all the way around. That's, that's going to fit everything, as opposed to twenty for all these and then ten for this.
Have any non-conforming lots become then conforming as a result of this table?
Uh, they could become more conforming, probably.
Well, more, yeah. Any conforming?
Sure, probably, because.
A lot is not going to become conforming unless you reduce the middle lot size.
Well, no, but that's for small lots, but I mean, you can have a very large lot in my house, for example, you know, I'm sure I'm within, it's a very old house, so it's close to the road, so, you know.
That's a non-conforming structure.
But that means I'm.
So.
A conformal lot.
So.
A lot can be conforming if you have a non-conforming structure. You can have non-conforming use.
Yeah, good point.
So, a non-conforming lot.
To do all this stuff.
You want to say, yeah.
Doesn't meet the requirements, part two, section, paragraph two, is that what you would say?
Sorry?
The non-conforming existing lot would not meet whatever the present requirements are for a residential, in the residential agricultural district. Is that, it happens to be paragraph two, requirements?
I, I don't understand that question.
Rephrase that as a question.
Well.
Where are you at? In paragraph two of what?
Page three.
It's got to be really clear. Can you put it in a chart?
It doesn't fit in a chart.
How do we just take the septic out of it and say, whatever the state requires, ten feet is, is a goal, and let the state septic designers figure out what that means for, based upon the soils and the wetlands and the setbacks and all the stuff that they look at in their chart.
To make it ten feet, would we need a warrant article?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, any changes within this, the zone, zero, we need warrant articles for.
But that, but whatever you do on this table doesn't fix paragraph E in the requirements section. And that's why I'm asking a question about non-conforming lot. What makes a non-conforming lot? When, when a subdivision, it's in your book over there.
You're right about the chart.
So, so again, there is something in there that we could change at the same time. If this moves forward, I would suggest that we correct E, because when, when these changes have been made, increasing and then decreasing, and making sure that people understood that septic systems were called out separately, was that people understood that that's not, because before we say accessory structures, and people are like, well, this is septic because before we say accessory structures, and people are like, well, there's a septic accessory structure, so we specifically defined it, but that, it should be pulled out of the way it's worded in E, because it, I think when, the way E is worded currently of saying a lot envelope which a house and septic system shall be placed to meet all existing setbacks and ordinance is, it's, it's really say a house.
So the question I'm asking, E is part of paragraph two, which is requirements, I believe, for a conforming lot.
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
So if the definitions and everything are there, I'm not real sure why 3A exists, to, to have something called all other lots and pre-existing lots, it's a conflict between where these two paragraphs exist in my head, unless there's some other reason for something called setbacks that maybe as, as part of zoning. I mean, there's a, there's a, there's special exception section.
Maybe.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's definitely a lot of things shoving the requirements.
Oh, yeah.
A standard zoning ordinance.
I know.
An evolving zoning ordinance would, would pull a lot of the stuff out and give its own sections. So, yeah, I, I now sort of just saying, it's not a requirement because it's non-conforming, so why is it in the requirements section? Yes.
And, and most non-conforming lots existed before zoning existed, because you can't create non-conforming lots in zoning.
Right.
So, the question still is, does this now make lots that were non-conforming conforming?
As Ed said-
I don't know.
Makes it less conforming, because again, a non-conforming lot will not, it has to be two acres, right?
That's, well, it has to be those requirements.
Yeah, two acres, plus, 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 plus.
And I think, and again, I think this is what we've done before with, with zoning, is, is what are you receiving for variance requests, you know, and are they just, and are they standardly approved because they make sense? Yes. So this is one of those items that came from that, is, is, for these pre-existing non-conforming lots, they're seeing a lot of variance requests, and, correct me if I misspeak, a lot of variance requests for the, the setback for the septic systems.
It's not just setbacks for septic, though.
Sure.
It's porches, it's decks.
So, so it seems like E to me, if you only have the first sentence and delete all the rest of it, that is a requirement that every conforming lot has to meet, end of story. Now setbacks, because this is a, a separate thing, I'm not saying this is true, but because it's separate, to me, doesn't seem like a requirement for a buildable lot.
Are those setbacks a requirement for a buildable lot? I, I would say yes.
E, E makes it that way, 2E makes it that way.
Right.
But 3A is what defines-
But 3A is, is setbacks.
Which is telling you what it has to look like.
But it's not requirements, I don't think.
So you're saying we should move the setbacks to the requirements section?
I, I'm, I'm walking through this, right?
Sorry to jump the gun on you there.
No, no, it's okay, but I think that's, that's how I think this links back together, and there shouldn't be a section called setbacks. It could be a section called special exceptions for setback provisions or whatever, but I don't know why that has to be there, that looks like-
So you're thinking that-
Conforming section, there's a, there's a-
So really, setbacks should become F.
I was thinking the same thing.
So it'd be EF, between property lines, where I just-
We have an Article 4 section you non-conformate, so you typically put a lot of things in there for non-conforming lots, because if you have a non-conforming lot, just skip to that section and that goes easier. Because it applies to, again, as I said, non-conforming lots, structures and uses, that's the whole, the whole thing. In this area that you're talking about here, requirements, you would usually have dimensional standards, a use table, and there would be their own sections, and the driveway would be its, its own thing as well. So for this, yeah, is, and, and as calling it F is perhaps, I guess, the best way to do it, but you would still want to pull out the pre-existing section of that.
Right.
What would galley F?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we wouldn't actually have to have the all lots either, just list off what, what those setbacks are, and you could actually bullet them and say, you know, the, between all property lines and any dwelling, bing, it's 50 feet. It wouldn't have to be the chart, it wouldn't have to have that other thing, because it's the requirement.
Yeah, I, I think that's what we were saying, yeah, seems like it to me. Makes sense to everyone else.
And, and why does 3B a special exception in the variance?
Three what?
3B. I, I don't know, that, isn't that what happens when you have?
Yeah, when you don't meet these provisions of setbacks? It's not a special exception, it's a variance.
Well, yeah, it just makes it a bit easier, right? Than, than the variance does, gives them three criteria instead of the five of a variance. So it's, it's still, it's just making it, it's making it an extra hurdle, but still making it an easier hurdle on a variance.
I don't know if there's a special exception.
Special exception-
It's not a variance, because when you are not complying-
Some people-
I thought, I thought this was like the, what I was saying, like a rule in a regulation, you know, the special exception is there to give you a special exception for special situations, a variance is if you're just-
Don't meet the requirement.
If you're not meeting requirements, yeah, minimum standard. But I don't, now, now that you make it to that point, I, I mean, I guess that contains a land use law that I have a grasp of.
There, we have had, what, one this year for a special exception, they looked over the ordinance, and they went before the zoning board for a special exception specifically instead of a variance on the setbacks.
And what were the requirements less for, lower for the special exception?
Yeah, special exception's going to be drawn out in the, in the ordinance like, like this is, so this gives you the three criteria that zoning would, the ZBA would apply to the request. If this didn't exist, and it didn't meet this, the applicant would have to go for a variance, which would be a stricter standard.
So are you saying that no one has voted for a variance for dimensional? It's always a special exception?
No, 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 no. I'm saying we had-
I don't know if there's ever been a special exception request for this.
One special, one special exception request, and I don't remember what the request was specifically, but-
What's the difference? Like, how does a person, how does a person know what they have to go for a special exception?
It's a question.
They, they meet with-
They read the zoning order. Nobody knew what they were talking about when they asked for it.
Because a variance is far more difficult where it's supposed to be, and a special exception is largely a layup, it's almost just, it's like an initial use permit. So.
Why don't we just change this here?
I didn't know.
Yeah, so, so again, you know, these easy changes that I think when they're easy, always get it into something like this, so.
Nothing's easy.
Um, again, all, my, my intention only was to, to ease some of the stuff that's going to the ZBA, based on what we've heard for input, and that was septics for the pre-existing non-conforming lots. If we can clean up something else at the same time, great, but I, I think we always have to be careful if we do that, that we then remove clarity for, for future boards or applicants. So I'm fine with, with however the board wants to move forward on this, but it's, I guess, again, read those sections, think about some of those items that, that have been discussed, like Mr. Severins indicated, like, can we clean up E and 3, and do we make that an F, or do we move it to a different section? I think moving it makes it kind of a bigger, bigger warrant article, unless there's a way we can do it creatively. And then the special exceptions, to be honest, you know, I don't even know if that's ever come up, that's predates me, so, as far as I know, as far as I remember.
All right, flaps it down, we're making an approach, can we land the plane?
Let's land it, so. Again, think about it, I would like everybody to just kind of go through and try to see how, what you would change and-
Good stuff.
And think about it, and just because this is here now, for any of these three that we've discussed tonight, just because we have like draft language, doesn't mean that's what we have to go forward with, if there's a way to strip things down, make it easier, keep it clear, great, let's do that, so that we don't add three pages to, to everything, we add three paragraphs.
I appreciate your notes, Blair, and reading through all of that, and there's a couple of little notes in the margins that kind of pull it together, it helps me.
He actually would pass me last night and say, read Blair's notes.
That's right, I said that to him today.
And anybody awake and watching this, this is, these are public hearings, so you're welcome to come in and chime in or send comments through too, so we can incorporate it and, and for discussion, and we always reserve a point in the night for public comment in general, there's nobody here tonight, so we'll move on, we've already done the minutes, woo-hoo. Select Board, South Board member updates, I'll start on my right, Mr. Severins, do you have anything? Right on the spot.
Nothing.
Used up all your questions. Mr. Evans.
Of course. Blair, do, do we need to do anything for you for your master plan application, blah, blah, blah?
No, I think in a summary, Ellen, by this Friday, so that she can appear before the Select Board to request permission to sign the application.
Oh.
And then I have to have it done by the end of the month, and I have to give her that summary, so they have something to vote on by Friday.
Who signs the application?
Well, they would be essentially giving her authorization to sign it, on their behalf.
They being the, the board?
The Select Board.
Okay.
I guess you guys, I don't know, maybe the chair can sign it or something, but that's what the motion is supposed to be.
So, so do you need, you don't need any?
You guys know, I've already got, we got the vote, you know, a couple meetings ago, so we're good here, it's just that, so I have to sign off on the application, and it's good that the board knows, you know, what's going on.
Yeah, I think receiving any money and grants, I think goes, goes to the US.
Exactly, someone has to literally take their funds and sign it.
Well, if you get approved, the, the funds get approved to us, we have to have a hearing to accept the-
Well, it's entirely separate thing, yeah.
We have to have a hearing to accept, because it's not normal fund for us, so there's a hearing that says, like, we just got the grant from the fire department for 144,000 or whatever it was, we had to have a hearing to accept that uncurd funds, to say, hey, we're bringing in this money because we got it from the year, so it's a public hearing that goes along with it. So if your grant's approved, then we have to have a hearing-
Another step, yeah.
Exactly, but that, that always is, I mean, no one says, don't take the money. Our meeting was short at the last election, we had a great election yesterday, we had 1,500 people show up, which is really good, we had a bunch of people that were there to cover all the things, there was no issues, no drama, it went really nice and smooth, we actually got out of there at 10 o'clock, which for an election is, for people working there, is actually considered reasonable, because come November, we might not leave till 1, and that's not even an exaggeration, with all writing candidates and everything that goes, 3,700 people coming to vote, it was just bonkers, but.
John, is it too late to volunteer to help with the general election?
No.
Okay.
No, 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 no. All right. Here we have one ca, person down, so we'll take somebody, sure, come on in, you can see supervisor checklist, or we'll see the moderator, Dee Decker, we're offering classes so you can learn how to be a ballot-
Dawn.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Dawn Farrell.
We have classes that we use before the selection to review the people that are actually going to be, you know, checking off names when you come in and stuff like this, and there is a small stipend to pay that you get paid for doing it, but if you want to just do it for nothing, the town appreciates that too, but we will pay you probably $10 an hour to sit there, how much is it?
I have no idea.
Oh, well, okay.
I really don't remember.
It was free when I was doing it.
Yeah. I worked for it. Hey, we're not going to brag about that, so.
That's what they told you, Skip.
It was all pencil counting, too, so.
So that was really good, and we have a meeting coming up on Monday, our last meeting was a big discussion is, why does the, the wellhead farstones cost so much money to run electricity? That was our big discussion, so.
Now you got to, now you got to discuss, we need a hospital.
Oh, no, another part that's coming up is the Warren article that passed last year to redo the gym floor, we've got a bunch of bids that are in, this is all of them that we had the conversations, and we just found out that the floor has the glue that's, put in the hole there, did test positive for asbestos.
Oh.
It did?
So, yeah.
At zero.
Like, no one's going to, but we can't just gut the whole floor now, because we've had an excessive, which is, I mean, we don't even have the money to even think about how it's got, so we're still doing the overlay over it.
Oh, okay.
Which is a perfectly fine, acceptable response.
In 25 years, this building might, I mean, I'll be, who knows where I'll be in 25, but, you know, when this town decides to spend the money for a new, new-
Floor.
Build, no, town bill. Right, town administration, I mean, that might be, so it might be something to fix and improve, you know, it's the best of our abilities to do it, because again, we're, we're limited to the resources that we have due to the fact that the Warren article says we can only expend this much on it.
And asbestos-
So, and we have to spend it because the town told us to spend the money.
Yeah.
But we can't go and say now we need, so it's, we're caught in a little corner, but we'll get it fixed. So that was our little trauma thing, and we got rid of some trucks and stuff that we needed for salvage and, you know, a little thing.
So what's going to happen now, we need a hospital?
Hospitals are still there.
Yeah, I know that, but-
No ALS.
Uh, uh, no ALS, no.
Yeah, but you know, that's, and again, again, that came up too, but the town of Epping's in there, Deerfield's in there, Nottingham ends there, Lee's in there, it's not a, not, I mean, it is part of our, but all these surrounding towns, we're using the same service that we were, so it's not like, oh, Exeter Stock, now all the town Nottingham affected, we're all affected. So either somebody's, another company's going to have to step up, provide that service, what fees will those cost? Something's going to happen, will Dover pick up a thing? But it's sad to see that the way our, again, this is a personal rant now, is the fact that, you know, for personal health care and safety and stuff like this, a big company like Exeter Hospital, which is a money-making institution, no matter what you say, says we're not making enough money, so we don't want to provide the service, total selfishness. And just have-
I won't argue with that.
People will have to suffer because of that. So, that's it, that's for the barbados.
I have nothing.
All right, just a tea on what Mr. Moore said, again, I'm always amazed by the volunteers and individuals that we have that run our elections in town, and as well as the town folks, again, both sides, everything, everybody's really respectful, and the custodial crew at the school is amazing, because that place was, was spotless and the floors were shining by 6 o'clock at night when I got there, so, just kudos to everybody there, and again, I'm mostly going to be at the next meeting for here, and I know we've got a lot on there, so I apologize, I can't be at that one, I'm traveling for work, and I don't think I'll be back at it.
Only update for me is I have volunteered to be an alternate with the Conservation Commission, they need more people, and there used to be a, you know, link between the CONCOM and the Planning Board here with a shared member, so I thought I'd try to maintain that link as well, so I'm serving as a alternate for now.
The new suit.
Yeah, and that's fine, because we only have, it's fine to serve on that, as long as it's only one individual from this board, if there was another individual, that, one would have to step down from one of the boards, but that's, same thing with the ZBA and-
The only thing I'd like to add is, is, again, with the numbers that Chris shared with us today, over a 10-year period, we got 500 new residents, is that what it said, Chris?
588.
588, and during that time, I have not felt even a little bit that our small town has felt anything less than a small town, it hasn't had much of an effect at all.
And there's only 15 new kids in the schools.
Right.